And we are now on item four on the agenda, Bill Number 121 EC. Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, good morning, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I move to place Bill 121 EC on third reading for purpose of discussion and, of course, for consideration for voting. And if I may make just a brief presentation.
Please continue, Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, no, okay, no objection, huh? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Bill 121 actually proposes to extend the due date for the submission of the report and recommendation of a review board, rather, a review task force, thus reviewing the compensation package and benefit package of our law enforcement officers. I understand that Bill 121 actually proposes to extend it to December 31, 2007, but I think we can see that this would be a moot point at this point. I therefore propose just a minor amendment to this to make it, the due date be April 30, 2008, and that would be on line, actually, on line, line 10 and 11, where it says no later than December 31, 2007. Perhaps we can amend that to read no later than April 30, 2008. DOA has not asked for an extension, but I know that the report is now done. I understand that they can proceed with the study, even with the due date passed, but I think with an amendment like this, it will be just making more proper, properly done.
I'm sorry, Senator, can you repeat the amendment?
On page, I guess on the second page two, line 10 and 11, it goes where it says no later than, actually, line 11.
Yes.
Instead of December 31, 2007, the amendment would be April 30, 2008, give them another full four-month, and hopefully by that time, they would be completed.
Okay, so the amendment is to replace in line 11, page two, December 31, 2007, with April 30, 2008?
Yes.
Is there any comment or any objection to the amendment, Senator Shimizu, on the amendment proffered by Senator Palacios?
I have no objection on the amendment of that date, but I do have on the, some discussion on the main bill itself.
Oh, there's no objection to the amendment?
No objection to changing the dates, but the substance of the bill itself is what I want to talk about.
So if there's no other comment or no objection on the amendment, amendment carries. On the bill as amended, 121, Senator Shimizu, then you had a comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, number one, this is to give more time to the original legislation. I would assume that when the original legislation was enacted and presented to this body, that was the timeline that was given. Now, the good senator is responding that although, they may need to do this, although there's no official request from the Department of Administration. However, I read, you know, and I glanced through the Director of Administration, basically, their recommendation is rather than, and let me just read it very quickly. What we think is a better solution is to forego this piecemeal legislation where we have seen nurses, pharmacists, teachers get their individual salary adjustment and fund a comprehensive government-wide classification compensation study as was accomplished back in the 1990s with the study that was done, I think, by the HAY group. It says, "The Department of Administration requested the Department of Interior for financial assistance but was turned down by conducting such an all-inclusive review. We can ensure fairness to all other positions within our government. We can include as part of the package training for our staff so we can conduct such a study." And they're going to be requesting now from the local, from the senators, from the legislature, money to fund this government-wide classification. You know, I introduced a bill that responded to the request of Department of Administration to do a comprehensive study. And not knowing that there are already mandates to do studies such as this for the law enforcement, public safety and law enforcement compensation package. I think each entities look at their missions, look at what it takes to train and retain, hire and retain professionals within their industry, and in this case, it's law enforcement, and felt that if the government, if this government does not compel to do a unified approach, and the head of this executive branch is the governor, then you're going to be seeing individuals, professions within the ranks bucking for this study and that study. And therefore, we won't have a unified program. And, you know, I like to be able to do all of it at one time, and so I'm caught in a quandary here because we have a bill before us, that a law that was already enacted, now we are asking for an extension. Now, as I read the testimony, is that the executive branch through the Department of Administration is hereby recommending that we forego that study and oppose the extension. Now, there's a question in my mind, and if the good author would yield to this question. The first question would be, who is conducting this specific study? And parallel to that is, how far alone is the study at this day and age in terms of 50%, 10%, 90%? And what are those aspects of the studies that are completed? What is left? And why couldn't they meet it at the time that it was first requested? That would help me, Mr. Speaker.
Will the author yield to the question? Senator Palacios?
Let me just start by saying that this is already Public Law 28, there's 154. So whether we extend or not, it does not prohibit DOA from proceeding and completing the report. I guess the amendment is, the proposal to amend the due date is merely administrative in nature and to make it more proper, the submission of the report. However, the Department of Administration Personnel Services under Cecilia Martinez is the one spearheading the, according to the law, to the public law. And at the onset, they have identified 12 distinct disciplines within our law enforcement, public safety positions. And within each discipline, of course, you have the ranking structure, so it's very complex. They have progressed well. The autonomous agencies have engaged the services of the consultants so that when these autonomous agencies, like the port police, airport police, the marshals submitted their input, it would have been completed at that point. So DOA actually is just not working with agencies that fall under the executive branch, the fire department, customs and quarantine, the police, the agriculture, law enforcement officers. And when the bill was passed in May 2006, it had given 180 days, which is six months to complete, but it was not complete. And I check once a month with them to see how we can facilitate, how my office can facilitate this, if there's any obstacles. And they're progressing well, they just not enough staff to really do this within the specified time. And that's why they're asking for the extension, but they're doing, they're progressing well. They have communicated regularly with the other agencies. Through this communication, I found out that the Guam Police Department and the customs and quarantine are the only two agencies that appear not interested really in moving this forward. So I had to write a letter to the governor that perhaps the governor's office can impress upon these two agencies the importance of this. I think there was a result out of that, and I guess by April 30, 2008, this would have been maybe, at least the draft report would be completed at that point.
Does this answer your questions, Senator?
Yes, he's answered it very clearly, and so can I proceed?
Please, continue, Senator Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Palacios, for that. Basically, like you said, it just changes the date and extends it, but, and I can understand and I can appreciate the testimonies given by the individual witnesses relative to their industry in law enforcement. However, the entity that was entrusted to do this was the Department of Administration. While they are proceeding, you know, they are also retrenching their position that maybe we should do this all at one time. Now, there is already a public law that sets that deadline. And if that deadline today does not come to fruition in terms of an end product by December 31, the agency that is mandated to do that is now saying that rather than our inability to meet that, and I'm not even sure that they will meet the April deadline, given the testimony being given by the Department of Administration. I do not foresee that. I'm wondering that April deadline that is being proctored and offered this morning, April 30, 2008, is there an assurance on the part of the agency entrusted with it? But by their testimony, it doesn't look like they're committed full-heartedly to that process. It appears that they're committed and making very strong recommendations that the time is probably more well-spent doing the government-wide study and embrace everybody and get the funding to complete. Now, I'll go ahead and honor the request of the good chair and vote for this, but there are times that I have heard this said to me, mark my word, come April 2008 may come and go and does not complete this aspect because the very organization that we're asking and entrusting to do that are the same organization that has been asking a number of senators to do a comprehensive white study. So I just want to bring that information to the body and to the people of Guam, that Department of Administration is strongly suggesting not to do the piecemeal. So when somebody says, "Let's don't do that, but we still mandate it by changing the law," I am, you know, I've been in public service over 30 years and know that we have so many unfunded mandate or just mandates that dates come and go because we may not be listening to the entity that we're mandating that they should do this. And again, I want to commend my colleague, Senator Palacios, in terms of nudging this and pushing this forward, but, and I will support that, but I also would like the reciprocity that we also support, funding them when my bill comes forward to do a unified all across. Otherwise, different agencies are going to come, a profession will say, "Me too, how about me? How about me?" So everything now, they're going to have expense for this group, this industry, this particular profession, and so forth. Put it all together, make it a unified, and then let's proceed with it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Shimizu, on Bill Number 121 EC, motion to place on third reading. Senator Guthers.
Thank you, Chairman, colleagues. I don't support the request of our colleague, Senator Palacios, because I believe, I believe that this is already in the process, and police departments have been working on it with other law enforcement agencies for some time. However, I also wish to say that having been in law enforcement, like my colleague, Senator Palacios, and also my colleague, Senator Ishizaki, and Senator Loz, these law enforcement agencies, they have to use a little bit share to move this forward. They have to marshal their resources, provide the data that's required by the Department of Administration in a timely manner. You cannot be lazy about this kind of process because this process cannot move forward unless the personnel involved complete all the data sheets and provide the information that are required for the personal services unit of the Department of Administration to evaluate the information. At the same time, as the chairman, you know, we need to acknowledge that in federal, our law enforcement community on Guam is underpaid, terribly underpaid. It's embarrassing what we pay entry-level police departments in the government of Guam.
And I'm surprised that any police officer, PO1, would even want to stay in the department based on what they're paid. And we've been losing officers to the federal service, to the military, and to other entities because the salaries are so bad. So we do need to rework the salary schedule for law enforcement. However, I wish to join my colleague, Senator Shimizu, and support and advocate for across the board compensation and pay classification study for the government of Guam. And I'm very proud to say that my colleague, Senator Frank Loz and myself, and Senator Spisho, introduced a bill about two weeks ago that would do just that. And Senator Shimizu has introduced another bill which would also contribute to this process. The wage scale in the government of Guam and professional position is below where it should be. We are not competitive, certainly with national standards, and in many cases, even locally, we're not competitive. And our friends in the military and our friends in the federal government on Guam are grabbing off our best talent because the wages are better. I hope that when we have the hearing on the compensation and pay classification bills, that our colleagues here will give good support to them, and we will get good input from the key stakeholders in the community. We recognize we have financial limitations in this government. But if we do a new pay compensation and classification plan, we can phase in the salary changes. So it is reasonable, but in the end will bring us up to the proper standard where we should be. And I don't think there should be any reason why we can't match national standards. Everyone says, "Oh, Guam is different from the states, and we shouldn't be paying as much as they pay there." But no, Mr. Chairman, those days are gone. Our employees deserve to be paid comparable salaries with their counterparts in state governments, in the federal government, in the private sector. And that's what these bills introduced by myself, Senator Frank Loz, his co-sponsors, and in another bill by Senator Shimizu would do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers, again, on the motion to place 121 EC on the third reading. Senator Ishizaki?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, many comments have been made in support of this, and I certainly am in total support of this. This bill is really to extend a little bit of time, and it's to address not just police officers, but for public safety professionals. And I think that all of us are concerned about the priorities in our spending, and our priorities in spending has been in education, health, and public safety. And if you look at our professionals who are involved in healthcare, we've done a lot to adjust the compensation requirements. And we deal with teachers and education administrators and counselors and healthcare professionals in the schools, we've given them appropriate adjustments. And the problem we face today is still a funding source. We still have a shortage of funds, and I certainly fully support the need for a HAY study, a government-wide HAY study. But we have a serious problem, Mr. Speaker, with recruiting and retaining public safety professionals. Too many of our people are really tied up in military reserve and National Guard duties because they cannot make ends meet. And it's a serious problem. I mean, these priorities are important for national security, but for our people, our salaries are just not adequate. And I have a serious concern. I mean, I dealt with recruiting and retaining cops. I dealt with retaining and recruiting corrections officers. We have a difficult time filling these slots, and the cost to government goes up exponentially when you don't have the necessary number of workers to do very basic responsibilities of public safety, whether they're firemen or customs officers or fish and wildlife conservation officers. All these jobs need to be done. If we don't have adequate numbers of people, it actually costs us a lot more in overtime compensation. And if we wisely adjust salaries, if we wisely hire the right number of employees, we can actually operate this government better and without too much more cost. Because the cost of overtime is a tremendous time and a half cost in which you pay very senior officers, and when you think about, when you compute the value of that, you can actually hire more people, give them a little bit more salary adjustments, and sustain our spending level at pretty near what we spend already. But it's difficult to do that when we cannot recruit. It's difficult to do that when we cannot retain, and it's difficult to recruit and retain when we don't pay them enough. So as my feeling to all of this is, is public safety is one of our top three spending requirements. It's a top three priority for our people, and we have not paid attention, we have not supported the public safety professionals. And so I commend and support Senator Palacios in his efforts, in his second effort to force Department of Administration and the public safety departments to participate, to move this purpose, the intent, forward. So thank you, Senator Palacios, and I commend you for your persistence, and I hope my colleagues all support it because I do. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Ishizaki. Senator Panglinen, on Bill 121 EC.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I think the debate on whether or not we should proceed with this study is over and done with. I think the only consideration here is, do we want to legitimize the lateness of the report that will come? Whether or not, as the good author mentioned, whether or not we pass this bill, the work's going to continue and it's going to get done. It's just that, do we want to legitimize the fact that when the report is submitted, if this bill's not amended in December, January, February, March, April, May, June, whenever, that they will be late, and they will not have complied with the deadline that was set into law? But let's understand why that happens. Let's try to understand why these people are late. It is because they're very clear in what they're telling us. Folks, we don't have the expertise to do this. We are limited in terms of our ability to put together a comprehensive analysis, benefits analysis, of the job descriptions in the public safety arena. So extending the deadline doesn't really help them. They're asking us to help them, and what we're only doing here is saying, "We'll give you more time to do what you cannot do, or don't have the expertise to do, or are not confident you can do the best job, the type of job that is required by the law." Why? Because we don't have the expertise, we don't have the money for training, we don't have the ability to go out and hire a consultant. In other words, they're telling us that the reason why we're trying to do this salary compensation for the cops extends to every other department and agency with the government of Guam with regards to what we're asking these people to do now and the resources that we are giving them, either in human resources, in financial resources, in training resources, and such. So let's kind of open up our ears and listen a little bit more to what is being said by these employees at the Department of Administration and what our expectations are of them, and whether or not we are being fair to these employees to ask them to do something that they're not afraid to admit, "We don't have the training to do this." All of the other autonomous agencies have gone out, and in order to meet the requirements of this law, went out and hired outside consultants with the necessary expertise to help them do it for their law enforcement personnel. Yet we're asking the Department of Administration to do it all on their own. Now, there's been a little bit of cooperation in the fact that now that they have the report from the autonomous agencies that went out and hired outside personnel to do the work that we're asking the Department of Administration personnel branch to do, are cooperating a little bit, but it's still, we're still asking them, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, we'll just give you more time, and that'll be fine." It's not fine. And let us take a look at what they're telling us we're going to, what we're doing with this respect. There's no more question, the work is proceeding, it'll get completed somehow, in some way, that they will complete it, but it goes to show you what we are creating with regards to the piecemeal approach to these things, you know? And it's this legislative bodies' policy to continue to piecemeal everything. We've piecemealed personnel to all the autonomous agencies that can create all these different positions, which is what we're trying to do with this. We're trying to say, "Hey, let's consolidate the, let's consolidate the analysis of the work, the skills, the compensation, the benefits for law enforcement personnel." So on one hand, we're kind of like working against ourselves because we say, "We're going to take personnel from the Port Authority, from Customs, from Airport, and consolidate them to review their pay scale." And then the next breath, we're passing a law that says, "The Port Authority, you go and develop your own personnel rules and regs for all these other positions. Airport, you do the same." It's like, where is the big picture with regards to our approach to this government? You know, we're kind of, we're deciding on one hand to consolidate and be comprehensive, and on the other hand, we're saying, "Go do your own." It doesn't make sense. And let me give you an example of what happens when we say, "Go do your own." We say, "Go do your own for special technical positions." For example, we gave it to the Consolidated Commission and GW and GPA. You know what, you know what's come back in the report? We said, "For technical positions that are specific to the, to the positions of, let's say, power authority." Did you know now that there's a technical position that a buyer who has to understand the procurement law is now a technical position so that he's gotten reclassified? And yet the same buyer, a GSA, is now, is still in the same place as he was before, but because we've now broken up the ability to do these personnel compensation and job description things to these autonomous agencies, they've now got a disparity once more between a buyer at one of the autonomous agencies and a buyer at GSA. Yet they're all applying the purchasing of goods and services Yet they're all applying the purchasing of goods and services properly with the procurement law. There's no difference in the procurement law between what procurement is done under GPA and what's done under GSA. There's no difference in the law, the process. They may be buying capacitors there and buying pencils here, but the process of buying capacitors is the same as the process of buying a pencil in terms of the procurement law. But now we're going to pay this guy more. Isn't that what we're trying to bring back with this comprehensive process? So, well, I support this and we need to do it. And maybe, maybe this is the process, that we just decide that, you know, these are the positions and these are the only ones we're going to adjust, no matter what. And if that's the big picture, then let's say that's the big picture, you know? And let's not create all these other complications by putting things asunder in all the other areas. So once again, I must reiterate that I support the comprehensive review, but let us be fair to the people that were asking to do the job. They're asking us for some assistance, more assistance, you know? Do we need to give them some money to hire somebody to train them? They're not even saying, hire somebody to do the work. They're saying, hire somebody to train us and we'll do the work. But please, train us. We want to do it the right way, and we don't know how. We know some of the components of what is required by the law and what you're asking us to do. But when you're asking us specific tasks, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a whole science to the human resource development of compensation levels and job descriptions and so forth. And while they say they have received some training for some of those components, what we're asking them to do is beyond their current capabilities. Not beyond what they will be, what they can do, but beyond their current capabilities because they will do and will be able to do it if we just provide them with the training. So I know that there's been a couple of bills introduced to require the government-wide stuff, but let's, let's kind of like focus and get a big-picture approach to this thing. And it's not just the review process that we want to happen. It's the development of our own internal human resource and capabilities and skills that must come along with this, you know? I must say, it's the same thing that we need to do with regards to everything else whenever we hire an outside consultant. Part of the deliverables of every outside consultant's contract should be the passing on of knowledge to our own government employees in those areas. It should be standard. It should be the same phrase that says, you know, subject to availability of funds. It should always be, all skills and processes and so forth employed by the consultant shall be imparted on our own people to upgrade their skills. So that maybe after the third consulting contract, we don't need them anymore. We should always have a learning aspect, a teaching aspect of all of our outside human resource acquisition of expertise and build our own base within-house. And then we can rationally expect better work from our employees, and we can rationally expect that they will be able to do what we ask them. And so I support this legislation. As the good author has mentioned, we just want to recognize that the employees are trying to do the job, and it's not that they didn't want to comply and submit it on time, it's they realize the complicated nature of the task we're asking them to do, and they don't have the skills to do it, and they're making and doing the best they can, and it's not their fault. I want to be very clear on that in terms of these individuals that are trying to do what we're asking them to do when we're not helping them by giving them the resources, the training, and the expertise. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinen, on Bill Number 121 EC. Senator Frank Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, right off the bat, I just want to say that I too am in support of this legislation. And I also recognize that what this legislation basically wants to do is just extend the deadline, you know? And the previous speaker was absolutely right. All the debate and the argument with regards to the intent of the law has already been argued. And that the author of this legislation here recognizes that it has still not been completed and wants to give them, give the agency mandated to conduct this study a little bit more time to complete it so that they can comply with the law. But at the same token, I must agree with the previous speaker. You know, in that, and I read the report, the submission by DOA in the committee report. And the concern that I have here is that, we already recognize that this is a law that was passed in the 20th Guam Legislature. Initially, from my understanding, they were given 180 days from, if I, if the author can confirm this, they were given 180 days from May of 2006 to complete it?
That's correct.
Okay. And they weren't able to do that. And DOA had submitted a report for the committee detailing as to why. And as a result, and because of that, and again, based on the discussion brought on by the previous speaker, I too am concerned that, I'd like to see this done. No, no, there's no doubt about it. It needs to get done. Prior law enforcement, I remember my, when I first joined law enforcement, I remember being interviewed by the local newspaper and how I felt about back then getting what a monitor brought, a 25-cent pay reduction. I went to the police department at basically $2.79 an hour. Obviously, nobody wants to be a police officer today at $2.79 an hour. I did. But even at that, the, you know, the starting salary for a police officer today here on Guam is, in the last study, in the last, with regards to the last information, is way below the poverty level. But at the same token, when making these studies, we also have to factor in, you know, a lot of times the studies are done comparatively with light police forces, you know, somewhere else in the United States, in the continental United States. And comparatively with the other things that have been, that need to be studied, this other than how much the officer is getting paid per hour, is how much the officer has to spend per month on their commodities, on his basic needs. That has to be incorporated into the study. And I can see, I can recognize, you know, some of the issues and some of the problems and some of the reasons why DOA, the employees of DOA, as much as they would like to be able to comply with this law, are very limited in their resources and their ability to be able to do so. And it's, it's not to their fault. They're doing the best they can with what they got. I liken this to being in the military and being told that you're going to have to clean the bathroom with a toothbrush. Oh, and by the way, it's 10 o'clock at night, you have to finish cleaning this bathroom by 6:00 in the morning. You know, sometimes that can be very difficult, especially depending on the size of toothbrush you have to clean the bathroom with. So that being said, I'd like to be able to proffer an amendment, or at least for discussion, with regards to, on Section 2, Page 2 of the bill, in Section 2, Subsection D, where it says, "The Director of Administration shall commence said review upon enactment hereof and based on the amendment made to this no later than April 30, 2008," shall issue, without, and recognizing that we need to set deadlines. I understand this. We need to set, because, but the word "final," issue a final, strike, possibly striking the word "final," the word "final" from this, and it says, "issue a report that includes recommendations." This way, it gives an opportunity to be able to address some of the shortcomings and shortfalls of being able to conduct a proper study. But also recognizing that on April 30 of 2008, that a report also has to be submitted so that there is, we know where they're at in this process. I just don't want to be able to put a date now and then, based on the limited resources the agency has in being able to conduct the needed study, that they're going to come up with a report that may not include everything necessary to justify an increase in pay or benefits. And so I'd like to be able to proffer that amendment, is, in this section here, is, strike out the word "final." So it now reads that, "No later than April 30, 2008, shall issue a report that includes recommendations of the Human Relations Officer, Coordinating Council." Again, but making an emphasis, and I want to bring this up for discussion, making an emphasis that, you know, if you can finish the report by April 30, finish the report. But on April 30, also, if there are shortcomings that you have, we need that report too as well, so we know where we can, where we need to go. Because we've got to get to some finality, but at the same time, we've got to recognize, you know, the restrictions and the limitations that the body mandated to conduct this study has. So with that, Mr. Speaker, the proffer of the amendment to strike out the word "final" from Page 2, in Section 2, Subsection D, right after, basically says, "No later than, now April 30, 2008, shall issue a report," striking out the word "final" there.
Okay. So the amendment is on line 11, Page 2, Section 2, after "shall issue a" and "to delete final."
Yes, sir.
Okay. On the amendment, if there's no objection?
Chief, no.
Okay. Amendment carries.
Thank you.
Senator Blas, continue?
That's it, sir.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Senator Blas. On the bill as amended, 121, Senator Rispishu.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in full support of this piece of legislation with somewhat mixed emotions. I, like previous speakers said earlier, that it's a, this would give us a big opportunity to, rather than piecemealing these, need to go and address the antiquated and obviously outdated HAY study, we possibly have an opportunity here to do a government-wide comprehensive study. But because this legislation is before us, we certainly don't want to delay the Government of Guam addressing the pay classification steps and grades and pay grades for these employees who guard and protect our community. You know, I recall the HAY study when it was first implemented, Government of Guam, and you know, previous speaker talked about how important Government of Guam employees, how important it is for Government of Guam employees to take this process very seriously. And I recall that, like in the case of the Department of Youth Affairs, Mr. Speaker, when the employees were required to fill out their, an analysis of what their job duties and description is so that this group can compile the report, at that time, management did not assist them, and they did not take this process very seriously. So as a result, rather than being recognized for providing care and custody to adolescents who make bad choices, they found themselves relegated to youth service workers. We obviously know that there's a big disparity with DYA alone. And when, when we had a public hearing in this bill, I asked the sponsor if we can expand this study to include the Department of Youth Affairs because they're kind of quasi-law enforcement type. They have responsibilities of running a youth correctional facility, their peace officer badge. And then the other side of the department is all youth development, who also, which also has a peace officer badge employees there. And the sponsor at that time, Mr. Speaker, didn't have a problem including the Department of Youth Affairs, but they, and he also suggested that we also take care of the Attorney General's Office because they're in the same situation. So my first amendment, after the word "Director of Corrections," we add in the words, "Director, Comma, Department of Youth Affairs, Comma, Attorney General Guam." And I probably need a minute recess to go into Public Law 28-154 to see if it's required that we go and amend that particular law. I know, because this legislation just deals with extending the deadline. But I'm wondering if we have to go into 28-154 and make those amendments there as well to acknowledge that these employees are peace officer badge, they do law enforcement-type work, and they should not be left behind when the Government of Guam does its comprehensive study to all employees serving under this public safety, law enforcement-type activities. Can I have a one-minute recess? My motion will stand, but I have one-minute recess.
Okay. We'll take a one-minute recess.
Do we have to do that? Cap? The word "Corrections," Director, Comma, Department of Youth Affairs, Comma, Attorney General Guam. It would be appropriate because the original Public Law 28-154, and after consultation with both Legislature's Council and Minority Council, Public Law 28-154, as written by Senator Palacios, it's very general in a sense that it requires the review to develop a compensation plan which treats all aspects of compensation, base salaries, benefits, pay differences, and other factors, as a total reward, an incentive package for employees with said plan to be uniformly administered throughout the Government of Guam. So the limitation is not just with these agencies. So my amendment, again, is to add the words, after Corrections, Director, Comma, Department of Youth Affairs, Comma, Attorney General Guam.
Okay. So on line six?
Beginning line 16.
Line 16, Page 2, actor, director, after Director of Corrections in line 16, Director, Comma, Department of Youth Affairs, Comma, then Attorney General of Guam. Okay. So if there's no objection to the amendment?
Objection.
Amendment carries.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And just to close, I, we all recognize that there are certain positions within the Government of Guam that their duties and responsibilities far exceed the salaries that they're currently getting. But for the public record, I want to acknowledge, as far as I can tell, the directors on these particular agencies which we're discussing did not take it upon themselves, Mr. Speaker, to go and provide a compensation that's beyond what's required by the uniform pay scale. So this is the way by which we address these kinds of pain equities. And I want to commend the mover of this bill, the good senator from Ordad, Chalampago, for providing this kind of process. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Rispishu. Okay. On Bill 121, there's, oh, sen, you, oh, you spoke on the amendment. Okay. Senator Shimizu?
Yeah. I have no objection to the amendment. The only thing is that we added more workload.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Senator. No, you spoke earlier on an amendment. You're speaking on the main bill. Continue.
Okay. Good. On the main bill, then. Thank you. Well, we added additional workload to DOA. I just spoke with them, and their progress is, in terms of a scale of 1 to 10, they're still at maybe 2, step 2. So I'm just questioning in my mind, while there's, the main amendment was to change it up to April 2008, I was skeptical about it, but now that we added more agencies to look at, it might be something that I wanted to... look at, it might be something that I wanted to raise, and the good author may want to consider, would that be enough time, given the additional work to do that? I just want to make that comment for the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Shimizu. Again, on the bill as amended, 121, no other speakers. Senator, would you like to close on it? The author of the bill?
No.
Okay, okay, if there's no objection to the motion to place into the third reading, no objections, ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, it's about 12 o'clock. We're going to take a luncheon recess until 2:00 this afternoon. We are in the second reading file, and number five on the agenda is Bill Number 184 EC. Senator Jesse Luhon, Jesse, Senator Luhon, you're recognized.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I'd like to, motion to place number, Bill Number 184 EC on the third reading, and I would like to speak on the bill.
Okay, no objection? Okay, Senator Luhon.
184 EC. Got it? Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, in the passing of the Honorable Speaker, Senator Antonio Armpinko, gives us reason to pause and to remember the many contributions to our island community that he has, not only himself, but his wife and family have contributed. His public involvement was most sustained as an elected representative of this very hall, Mr. Speaker. And before this, in the session hall of the Guam Congress Building, most of us remember, the great majority of us in this legislature never served in the Guam Congress Building. We name public buildings and places, Mr. Speaker, after prominent citizens who impact our very lives. They're known to us, and so that also future generations will come to know as well that their virtues and accomplishments are worthy of remembrance and emulation. And so it is with the legislative hall, whether here or when this august body returns to the Guam Congress Building as the seat of our island's government. It is in this hall that the late Speaker Antonio Armpinko made his lasting mark, making a difference in the lives of our people, in shaping our future. Over the years, he's returned time and again, and became the master of the processes at work in this very setting. Decorum, parliamentary procedures, debate, building consensus and accommodation. Through it all, he was a gentleman who revealed his passion when our people's well-being demanded it. We look to Tony for guidance and advice on how best to proceed in the interest of our people and the integrity of this formal body. He was wise, and he was, and he loved his people, his island people. Now that he's no, not, that he's not amongst us, we should remember and remind ourselves often what this one man has achieved and what he has brought to this body, whenever we gather formally to conduct the people's affairs. And by naming the Guam Legislature Session Hall after our late colleague, for it to be known, for this hall to be known as the Speaker Antonio Armpinko Legislative Session Hall. Beforehand, Mr. Speaker, I've got two amendments. First amendment, Mr. Speaker, is to add a second co-sponsor, J.T. Wampat, and third co-sponsor is T.R. Munia Barnes.
Okay, and if there's no objection? Okay, amendment carries. Senator Luhon?
Mr. Speaker, my last amendment actually is to amend the last sentence on section one, starting on line seven, as follows. From funds allocated to the general operating budget of the Asnaturan Guam, and also to a plaque shall be permanently affixed to and maintained at the hall's main entrance. That's my amendment.
Okay, on the second amendment, and that is to amend the last section of, sentence of section one, starting on line seven, as follows, and you're striking out and engross engraved brass, and adding, "From funds allocated to the general operating budget of the Asnaturan Guam," a, and then plaque, and then, of course, adding, "And maintained at the hall's main entrance." And on the amendment-
It should be the amendment with the asterisk on it, Mr. Speaker.
On the asteri-, okay, fine. On the amendment with the asterisk on it, Senator Tina Munia Barnes? Oh, Senator Judy Wampat, on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, Mr. Speaker, I'm sorry. On the amendment here, it says, "From funds allocated to the general operating budget of the Asnaturan Guam." I know that this was brought up during the public hearing, that they didn't want this to be an unfunded mandate, and that is the reason for this particular language. Although, I'm thinking is that, and I know there is some shortfalls throughout the government, and I'm wondering how my colleagues will feel about this, is that rather than saying that it would come from the operating budget of the Asnaturan Guam, that we really just amongst ourselves, because when you think about how much would an engraved brass plaque actually cost, it would probably be around $200 maybe, or less, and, you know, it's such a nominal fee, that I would rather that we just not use "from funds allocated to the general operating budget of the legislature," but to delete that, and I think that maybe just amongst ourselves, is that we actually incur the cost of, you know, paying for that plaque. I mean, what, $20 per person, basically, is not something that's going to tear anybody's pockets, so.
Forty dollars per Republican.
(laughing) So, no, it's just a private joke, but $40 per Republican, $20 per Senate for Democrat. I'm just joking.
Oh, wait, I don't owe you the 125. I owe you the 125. I've got to get my dessert.
But, so I'd like to amend the amendment if I could, and just delete that instead, and I think this is something that we can all take care of ourselves, and I hope my colleagues would understand.
Okay, so your amendment to the amendment would be to delete your-
From funds allocated to the general operating budget of the Asnaturan Guam.
Okay.
And I'd just like for us to be the ones to incur the cost instead for this.
Okay, there has been an amendment to the amendment, and just deleting that first line, "From funds allocated to the general operating budget of the Asnaturan Guam." If there's no comment, any objection on the amendment to the amendment? Senator Jesse Luhon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I've got no problem with the amendment. The only thing, my only concern at this point is that, we all know that the building in this hall which we're in is a temporary building, and I'm hoping that down the line, of course, the government's revenue stream will be a little better, and I'm hoping that when this government becomes a little better financially, that eventually, I know we're entertaining to re-renovate the Congress Building, and I should hope that when, when, hopefully, we're still in the legislature, when that does move over there, but when it does happen, I hope the legislature can honor our late speaker with a plaque. It may not, and that's why I removed brass, because maybe by that time, you know, something better can be, can be put together for that, at that point. So I don't, you know, because as we speak, Mr. Speaker, what we want to do is, as soon as this passes, we want to take Speaker Armpinko's plaque, remove the base, and hang it out outside of the hall, to be known as the Antonio Armpinko Legislative Session Hall. But again, that's a temporary for us, until such a time that we get a better plaque, but I should hope that we move to a more permanent building, that we should honor him even more with, you know, if it's a bronze, whatever it is that the legislature decides. So, again, I'm not opposed to that, to the amendment, but I just want to make sure that he's honored in a dignified way, that, again, we're not just succumbing to pennies in the sense of honoring this great man that has been our mentor over the years, Mr. Speaker. I know he's meant a great deal to me, as well as yourself, Mr. Speaker, and again, I don't want to tarnish that in any way for a few dollars, Mr. Speaker. And so, again, with that, I don't have, I don't have a problem with the amendment, it's just, again, that when we do move to, when this hall moves to its permanent home, that he's honored with a dignified and a plaque that will outlive all of us, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Here's my question.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, Senator Luhon. On the amendment to the amendment, if there's no, no, oh, no comment, no objection?
Well, I was just going to do a point of clarification based on this statement. Okay, here's my question.
Mr. Speaker, I was just wanting to do a point of clarification, and I-
Oh, Senator, on the amendment to the amendment, go ahead, please.
Yes. Mr. Speaker, I just, I just like, would like to note the concern, and I really do share the same sentiments of the author of this legislation, and the reason why he wanted the amendment. Yes, it is a fact that we will be deliberating on a resolution to work closely with the Guam Preservation Trust to refurbish the Congress Building back so that it could be utilized by the policymakers, and I too share that concern, that I want to make sure that if that were to come to full fruition, that the funding source could be allocated and could be there. So, you know, though I don't have any problems with that, I just want to know that the, if Senator Luhon was offering an amendment to Senator Wampat's amendment, that I would support that amendment to the amendment. So I don't know, I just want to make sure, you had a question to see if he was offering that as amendment to the amendment?
Well, I can, actually, if there's an amendment, it's just I wanted, you know, I mean, opposing the proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker, again, with that, and just to keep this intact, and again, I know, I know for right now, that what we're going to do is temporarily put his nameplate up there, but again, we need to, you know, we need to honor him, glorify the man that served in these hall halls, and again, if Senator Barnes, that the Preservation Trust is in charge of that, and maybe there's something that they can put in that, that the hall is formally named after the Honorable Speaker, and maybe something better than the plaque, maybe a statue can be referenced in regards to that. But again, I don't, I, you know, I don't want to remove again that, I mean, to amend it, to make it better, I agree, but otherwise, if we can just leave it as it is.
Okay, so you have an objection to the amendment to the amendment?
If Senator Barnes is going to support my amendment to leave it as it is, then I will, Mr. Speaker.
Okay.
Okay, let me ask the minority leader. Minority leader, could you please withdraw your amendment?
Obviously, there's some issues with the amendment to the amendment, and it's such a diplomatic way of saying "objection" to something, so I don't see an objection at this point, so, but obviously, there's been some heavy suggestions here. So, we're still on the amendment to the amendment. I'm looking towards the body, if there's any other comment or discussion on the amendment to the amendment?
He has an amendment. Because it's very expensive. They steal it, they go to jail for it.
Senator, if there's no other comments on the amendment to the amendment, I'll allow the author of the amendment to the amendment to close. Senator Wampat?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I understand, of course, where the author is coming from. My concern, of course, is that I really wanted to, first of all, is to make sure that this is something that, even though we may list where it's coming from, and we know financially it might be difficult, and I just didn't want this to be an unfunded mandate, that nothing gets done, and it doesn't even happen, and it could have forgotten, could have easily been forgotten and gone on the wayside, and I just don't want to see that happen. And that was the reason why I sort of, sort of made the challenge, basically, for every one of us in here, is to put in, you know, that nominal fee to do something now, and then that way, when things, of course, get better, and yes, when the building is restored, the original building is restored, that it would follow there, and something even far more appropriate be done, and I'm sure that's going to happen. I just want to make sure then, that if I withdraw this amendment, that it's not, that it's not, we're not going to say that we really don't have the money within our operating budget to put up that plaque. And I know in the interim, we were actually looking at possibly taking his, one of his nameplates that he has on his desk, that we could use temporarily to put there, to make sure that we just don't forget that it should be done, and it would just be a reminder to continue to do that. So if everyone is, of course, is making that commitment that it does happen, then I would, I would be willing to withdraw my amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Wampat. So again, there's no objection to the withdrawal of the amendment to the amendment? No objection. Back to the main amendment, Senator Tina Munia Barnes, on the main amendment?
The main amendment, not on the bill.
On the, we're still on the amendment. Now, there's been a withdrawal of the amendment to the amendment, so now we're back to the main amendment, and you're next in line for discussion on the amendment.
Right, Mr. Speaker, I'd just like to note for the record that I support the author's amendment for the inclusion for that funding source, and I think it's really important that we continue to pay tribute or to dignify the memory of our colleague who has been with us for many, many, many years, and I just think it's, I support his amendment, and I hope my colleagues support the same. Sis, os masi.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator. There's no other comments, no other questions, if there's no objection to the amendment, amendment carries. Senator, you're still, okay, you're through, okay.
Vice Speaker Campbell, you're recognized on the bill?
Yes, thank you very much, Senator, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of Bill Number 184, and it was unfortunate, I had arrived from off-island the previous night, was unable to make the hearing, but I am wholeheartedly and in full support of this particular piece of legislation, because I've had the opportunity to know Antonio Armpinko. He was, again, the longest-serving senator in the history of the Guam Legislature, as well as he was, he was my colleague in the 25th, 26th, 28th, and now the 29th Guam Legislature. He was my mentor, and he was my partner. We ran a unsuccessful gubernatorial bid back in 2002. Senior Senator Speaker Armpinko, he saw me, and he mentored me as a freshman senator in the 25th Guam Legislature, and he taught me well. Sometimes, when you're a young freshman senator, you've got a lot of energy, you're a lot of enthusiasm, and sometimes you're a little bit too brash, and I must confess, I had a little bit of energy. confess, I had a little bit of energy and a lot of brashness. And with that, you come into an institution such as this legislature, and you do not get a full understanding of not only your responsibility, but also the honor and respect that you should have for this office. It's, it was, it took me several terms to, to understand that. And again, this last term, working with Senior Senator Umpinko, we had the opportunity to, and I don't know whether my colleagues noted it, there was a, he seemed a very, very resigned, he was a man comfortable with himself, and, and as we had gone through this, and fairly, fairly hectic schedule of the 29th Guam Legislature, where we had to, to go through three budget sessions, with all the tension, and I know that there was a lot of, of anxiety, pressure, and strain, and all of us dealing with many issues that are affecting this island, that had come through this legislative hall. You know, with Senior Senator Umpinko, and he may have been sick, but you never noted it, he, he seemed so relaxed, so calm, and anytime that we were either in the legislative hall, dealing with major issues, or outside of this legislative hall, and, and either doing lobbying, or trying to discuss issues that we felt were important, the man seemed to be at, at peace with himself. And with that, it kind of gave me a better understanding of, of this, of this job that I have, that you've got to, you've got to take everything in perspective. You, you do your best and do your job, but don't take things personally, in a sense that you may have agreements or disagreements with colleagues, and whether it's partisan in matter or policy in matter. And you try to keep your emotions to yourself. There's such a thing as passion, but passion is something that you can display in this session hall. Anger is something that you don't show, or you shouldn't show. In this short time that I've been acting, Speaker, I've been trying to emulate the lessons that were, that I've learned and were taught by Senior Senator Umpinko. And again, a lot of it has to do with the respect that you should have, and we all should have for this office. And I don't think I would have learned it without, again, the mentoring and the tutelage of Senior Senator Umpinko. So, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Speaker, this is indeed a bill that's worthy for unanimous vote. I'm asking for the support of all my colleagues in, in the passage of this bill, and then hopefully, the next time we meet in January, we will walk into this hall, in this hall that would be named the Speaker Antonio Umpinko Legislative Session Hall. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Cavill. Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Sidoas Massey, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this bill. I'd like to thank the author of the resolution, Senator Luhon, for giving me the opportunity to be a co-sponsor. I'm hoping that the rest of my colleagues will join in, in, in this same support of Bill 184. Mr. Speaker, as I attended the public hearing on Bill 184, and as I sat there with, with my heart just being warmed from listening to not just those who spoke quietly about him on the side, but though, our policymakers, our former colleagues, who spoke of a man who they believed was a great student of the common man, and I say that with such a loving heart, Mr. Speaker, as, as this is a man who brought both parties together, this was a man who continued to make sure that if there was a, an issue, if there was a concern, if there was an issue that needed to be dealt with, know that with his calm sense, that he would bring resolution to an issue on hand. They talked about his longevity, they talked about him being the peacemaker, they talked about his commitment to the people of Guam, they talked about how his word was as good as gold, and he always said that to me as a very young freshman senator, and coming back into this policymaking body. He said, "If there's anything that you can offer, is to know that your word is as good as gold, and that if you make a commitment to your people and to your colleagues, that know that that word should be held." And you know, I had great respect and admiration for the man, because I knew him on a different sense. When I became a senator in the 27th Guam Legislature, he had approached me as the Oversight Chair on Committee on Community and Culture, and he had asked me if I could be as kind to make sure that the organizations or the, the nonprofit organizations helping and supporting the Fano Memorial and the Menengan Memorial, asked me to help assist and take over and make sure, because that he was not in, in the legislature, he wanted to make sure that, that our people, our history, our culture, the preservation of who we are as a people would not be forgotten, that the memorial services will continue to go. And he had asked if there was anything that he could do, and as far as resources, as far as getting everybody together, that he'd still volunteer and assist. And he always said, "You know what? My time is, I've, I've already done, and I'd like for you, for you young folks to take over." And I said, "What better way than to give back to, to our community?" Was but to be able to protect and to continue to bring the education of what had happened to our, our, our folks, our community, who suffered the atrocities of World War II. And that's how I worked closely with him. His 27 years of service, Mr. Speaker, him being the longest policymaker, winning 14 elections, being the best parliamentary man, I guess, who could say, if there was ever a section that had to be cited, with the exception of Speaker Ben, this man knew it word for word. And if there was anything that he could bring to this body, was to be able to bring that peace for both sides. And what fitting way, Mr. Speaker, is to pay tribute to a man, to pay tribute to, to the memory of what this man has done for everybody in the community. I rise in full support of this Bill 184. I thank again the author for giving me the opportunity to be a co-sponsor on this bill, and I ask my colleagues to please, please support this, this bill. Sidoas Massey, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Tina Rose Muny Barnes. Senator Rispisho?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I too rise in full support of this bill, and I want to just beg our colleagues' indulgence to give me a little bit of a time and an opportunity to say what I have to say for our good friend, our colleague, and someone that we all looked up to. As you know, I was not on island at the time. I was in LA with my family, we were on vacation, and I recall the last conversation I had with Speaker Umpinko, we were all here in session, and he said, "Hey, I heard you're leaving, where are you going?" And I said, "Well, it's just a spontaneous trip that we're going to take, we're going to take our two-and-a-half-year-old boy to Disneyland." And his face lit up, and, and I could tell that he was very excited and happy that I was going to do something like that, because he always, he told me that no matter what you do, no matter how busy we are in public life, you must always take the time to spend with your family. And I, and I said, "But, Mr. Speaker, I know we're going to be a journey." He says, "It's fine, you need to go." And then we talked a little bit about his health, and he said that he felt very assured that whatever ailment he had, they would take care of it. So, his spirits were really high, and we all know that even though he had to check into G M H for his procedure, we kind of, he, he wanted to be here to vote for several pieces of legislation before we did. So, we had to, as a body, tell him, "Mr. Speaker, go, it's time for you to go take care of what you have to take care of." And then that, that showed, and I know that other senators spoke about, that that showed his commitment to public service. And I, when I was in Los Angeles, and I got the call, and immediately I went online to see what, you know, the result, the news that he had passed away, complications that he had. I was just filled with mixed emotions. I was, you know how you feel, like you want to be there to pay your respects, to convey to the family your sentiments, and, and just express condolences. So, immediately, I tried to make my reservations to come home, Mr. Speaker. Even though I was on family vacation, my wife said, "If you have to go, you have to go, we understand." I was with my in-laws, so it was some kind of a family trip that we had, and we were all there, but they all said, "If you have to go, you have to go." Well, I couldn't make my connecting flight, and then we all go through this self-reflection and wonder, "Why was it I couldn't make the connecting flight?" And maybe there was a, a deeper message there. And I think that was Speaker Umpinko, in his very own way, saying, "No, you need to be there with your family," because that's exactly what I would have done. And we all keep asking ourselves, every time we're in session and things get heated, we always say, "What would Speaker Umpinko do?" And we turn to his guidance, and, and when it was with him, it was not about Republicans or Democrats, or even partisanship, or even one-upmanship. We always turned to him to say, "Mr. Speaker, you pride yourself on following the process, playing by the rules," and he was very fair. And even at times when, during the budget session, things got pretty heated, and he was chairing the committee of the whole, he guided this legislature through those very rough times. And even though he was pretty stern sometimes, but he was very firm, he was very fair, he would pull me outside, and I want you to know this, Mr. Speaker, you wonder where I get the motivation to do what I do sometimes. It was Speaker Umpinko who said, "Rory, I understand where you're coming from, I've been a minority for 14 years, and that's the responsibility of the minority. So, so, keep doing what you're doing." So, you know, I always was encouraged, but, but I know, when he said, "Keep doing what you're doing," he also meant, "Keep doing what you're doing with respect and diplomacy, and stay above board, stick to the issues, don't get involved in the politics of personal destruction or the personalities." And more importantly, I think what we've learned from serving with Speaker Umpinko, is that we may disagree in here with whatever issue is before us, but what happens in the session hall stays in the session hall, and after session, after we leave those doors, we have to embrace each other and come together, and, and have that kind of thinking, because it's not at all personal. So, today, I rise in full support of this bill, and I think it's properly fitting that we have this session hall named after our good friend, and very, very good friend and dear colleague who's gone, Speaker Umpinko, so that we can be reminded of what public service is truly about, and so that we can be reminded that as we address these issues before us, it must stay in the session hall, and after that, it's, it's not personal or anything of that sort. So, I want to commend the sponsor for bringing this bill forward, and I want to, I know that every single member of this legislature would stand up and say nice things about Speaker Umpinko, and, Mr. Speaker, I wanted to be able to do the same. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Rispisho. Okay, on Bill Number 184. Okay, we, we need a motion to place down into the third reading.
I'll move it.
Oh, you already spoke. We're going to take a, we're going to, can someone move it?
Yes.
Oh, no, you spoke, you spoke already, so.
I never spoke on this.
Senator Shimizu on Bill-
Okay, here's the, but for the record, I've not spoken-
Okay, Bill 184, there, would you care to speak on 184, or?
No, that's what they're-
Okay, if there's no other comments, nor the discussion, Senator Luhon, you have the opportunity to make a closing statement to Bill 184.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Again, I want to thank my colleagues for all the comments, and, you know, I, I think it's self-explanatory. As a matter of fact, we've already put up the plaque pretty much, and hopefully, with this body, when, when we vote, and then that'll be the official time that this hall will become known as the Antonio Umpinko, Speaker Antonio Umpinko Legislative Session Hall. So, with that, I just want to, I want to thank all my colleagues for, for all the support in that, and, you know, it could have been anybody to introduce this, Mr. Speaker, I just happen to be the one. But anyway, thank you again, and each one of us, again, will, will always remember this day, and generations to come will, you know, at some point, people will question, "Who is this man?" And then, you know, history will, will tell its own story. With that, thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I'd like to move Bill 184 EC into a third reading.
Okay, and if there's no objection, so moved. Okay, okay, on Senator, oh, Senator Pangolinan?
Sidoas Massey, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill Number 155, as amended by the author, be-
Has it been, it's been accepted, right?
Yes, it's been accepted. Be placed in the third reading file.
Okay, for discussion.
And I'd like to just briefly speak on the bill.
No objection, okay, continue, Senator.
Sidoas Massey, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, Bill 155 really is a way to try and just give a little bit more consideration to individuals who are involved in auto accident that are caused by non-insured drivers. As you know, Mr. Speaker, we have a law in Guam called mandatory insurance, liability insurance, but not everybody complies with the law. And part of the law not only requires the driver to have mandatory liability insurance, but it requires the insurance companies to notify the Department of Revenue and Taxation when drivers don't renew their policy, or cancel their policy, and are driving on the road without liability insurance, therefore in violation of the law. And sometimes what happens is you can't catch these people, because they would go and sign up for the insurance, register their car, and then cancel the policy a month or two after they get their registration, and now the car's legal, but they have canceled their insurance, so they are illegally driving as a result of the cancellation of the liability insurance. Now, the law says that if a person cancels their liability insurance after the registration of the car and so forth, then the insurance company is required to report that to the Department of Revenue and Tax. If they fail to report it, then they're subject to a $200 fine, and, I'm sorry, a $500 fine. So, the insurance company pays a fine for not reporting to the Department of Revenue and Tax when a driver cancels their policy, therefore making that driver drive illegally because of the absence of, of liability insurance. But we've seen so many times where drivers do get into these accidents, and they find out that in fact, the person is uninsured or has canceled their policy. Now, what this bill would do is, rather than have the fine go to the Department of Revenue and Tax- and Taxation, because really, what is the, who is getting harmed? It is the driver that gets involved in an accident that's not his fault, hit by a driver who has canceled his insurance policy, and so therefore he has damage to his car or else he has medical problems and so forth, and he can't charge against the other driver's insurance, because it's been canceled. But the fine that is imposed on that, on the insurance company for failing to report that cancellation goes to the government. And I'm saying, where is the government hurt? The government, that fine is supposed to be so that everybody complies and we protect the driver. So what this does, Mr. Speaker, is that when there is an accident, you find out that the other person has in fact, is not insured and is driving in violation of the law, and then you further find through research records that the insurance company, that that person had canceled his policy and the insurance company did not report to Rev and Tax in time, then the insurance company will pay the $500 fine to the person that was in the accident. So therefore, you have some relief for the person for, from an accident from the insurance company who's not following the law along and so forth. And what this does also is it makes it clear that that payment of that $500 to the driver who was in the accident perpetrated by the uninsured driver by the insurance company does not extinguish any claim that that, that the person who was hit, who was not at fault, has against any other party. But that, that $500 will help him either get his car repaired or pay for a doctor's visit or a chiropractic visit for whiplash or whatever, but that rather than the money going to the government, who's not really harmed, that the person who suffers the damage and is, and the parties that are not following the law provide a little bit of relief to that. So that's the intent of this bill. It's fairly simple, and it's just trying to provide additional protection and relief for drivers who comply and to be supported by insurance companies who don't comply with the, with the law. And really, we receive very favorable testimony even from the insurance companies. It is in everybody's interest to follow the law, and they say, if this is what it takes and somebody falls through the cracks and they have to pay that fine, they really don't mind to do it. They're saying they're not going to have a problem, they're going to comply. And really, that's all we want. We want to know who's driving out there without it, and if somebody falls through the cracks and you get hit, then you have a little bit of relief from, from the violation of the law. So, thank you, and Sidus Massey, Mr. Speaker, and I graciously ask my colleagues for support.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan, on Bill Number 155. Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of this bill, of course. This bill will strengthen, of course, the current statute with respect to providing for a mandatory liability insurance coverage. We understand that there's been some abuses, some circumventing of the law, that just to get the car renewed, for example, people would go and get a, I guess, a conditional insurance coverage or some kind of certification, and then they never really live up to paying their, I guess, the installment to pay of the insurance. And this, I guess, would strengthen that. At the same time, I guess, this law, I mean, if it can be strengthened further by perhaps maybe providing, and I'm not suggesting at this point for an amendment, but providing for some kind of suspension of a driver's license of a person who actually was driving knowingly that the insurance coverage is not valid at that point, but we can take that up later on. But for my purpose today, I rise in support of this bill, Mr. Chairman. One clarification that I'd like to ask is that it says here that the insurance company failed, for example, to notify the proper authorities pursuant to paragraph four, item A. I would assume that this defined the time within which a notice is to be given out and at the same time, by what means?
Is that a question to the author?
Yeah.
Will the author, author yield?
Yes, that provision of the law sets out for the time that the insurance company must report to Rev and Tax from the date of the cancellation of the insurance and the process for doing it. They can do it electronically or they can do it through hard copy.
Very good. Because really, timeliness is really of the essence when it comes to this, because if it takes too long a requirement, a period of time within which a person is mandated, a company is mandated to make the report, cancellation could be done, rather, cancellation would have occurred probably a day and the day following day, the accident occurred. Of course, notification from the insurance probably would not have been received yet by, so there has to be, I guess, a very reasonable time, as much as possible, of course, the more timely, the better. And I, I don't want to disturb the current paragraph for item A, but I thought that the sooner the report is done, the better. This is a good bill, Mr. Chairman, and I support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Blaz?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I can appreciate the intent of the, of the bill and the intent that the author has with the bill. But, you know, in reading the bill, one of the things that I could come to question here and recognizing what we're trying to ultimately do is basically provide for a safer roadway, you know, so that we don't have to worry about if we do get into an accident, that we're not getting into an accident with an individual who's driving a vehicle that's uninsured. But, you know, getting past this, then you have to ask the question, what if the insurance company does report it in a timely manner? You know, they do make the report to Revenue and Tax that, you know, the insurance on this vehicle has expired or has not been renewed or, they make this, this report to Revenue and Tax. What happens after that? What happens then with regards to who's responsible then for ensuring that now that this car doesn't have insurance or there, there's no insurance on this car, that this car can't be on the road? Who's responsible for that? Because the insurance can, the insurance company can report to Revenue and Taxation that this insurance is no longer carried on the vehicle, but the vehicle's still on the road. And chances are, if they get into an accident, there's not going to be any penalty that's going to be imposed on the insurance carrier. And yet, too, because it's uninsured, chances are because of this, how is the individual who was injured in this, in this accident, the unintended victim of this accident, how is this person going to be compensated for that? So although I appreciate and I recognize the intent of this, is really recognizing that we all know that in order for you to legally operate your vehicle on a roadway, you must have insurance, you must have at least liability insurance on this vehicle. Is it proper, is it right for us to then impose this penalty on the insurance company as opposed to imposing the penalty on the individual who owns the car? So with that, you know, it's not a matter of proffering an amendment, it's just a matter of bringing a point of concern out, hopefully for a discussion maybe on future legislation, to actually be able to provide the penalty for the individual this penalty should be imposed on. It's that owner of the vehicle who did not renew the, renew the insurance or just failed to get one. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Blaz. Senator Judy Guthers? My apologies, there was a, oh, no, no, the line, you raised your hand first, yes, Senator Guthers, Senator Guthers.
I didn't wait because I have an amendment. I have to make odds.
Okay, so the next in line was Senator Tina Rose Muny Barnes?
Sidus Massey, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of Bill Number 155, as amended by the author, and I'd really like to thank the author for introducing this, this bill. And I want to say that in the last couple of years, being able to work in the private industry, being able to work for a auto dealership, these kind of acts would happen almost always with a lot of the customers. What they literally would do would be, they would purchase, put a down payment on the insurance policy, and no sooner than they got the registration, they would just cancel the insurance policy. And of course, the, the insurance companies would have no recourse to collect any notices or payments due unless they took them to court for the remainder of the balance. And of course, when a policy is issued, there's a timeline that the coverage is issued for, but for the full amount. And then, of course, a lot of the insurance companies here have that opportunity to work payment arrangements for, for their customers or their insured, but then yet the policy extends throughout the duration of the year. And just being able to see that and the, I would say, the violations or the circumventing of what is really was in, put in place, the law that was put in place to be able to protect the vehicles and those driving on the road, I thought that that was a very, it was a misconception by those folks who took advantage to circumvent the law. And I support this bill 100% because as a victim of that and knowing that there was others out there, I think it's important that it is the duty and responsibility of insurance, and it just gives more protection, not just to those that are insured, but to the government at hand for making sure that those cancellations are duly noted by the department, by the government of Guam, and to know that everybody, it's a protection and a safeguard for everybody. So I rise, Mr. Speaker, in full support of Bill 155, and I hope my colleagues support the efforts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Rose, Tina Rose Muny Barnes. Senator Judy Guthers? On Bill Number 155, E.C.
Mr. Chairman, the amendment, I guess, is being zeraxed. Could we have a one-minute recess, please?
Okay, we'll have a couple of minutes recess.
I appreciate very much Bill 155. I think it would be very helpful to those individuals who've actually become victims of accidents by uninsured drivers and uninsured vehicles. However, I want to go a step further, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, and I want to offer a new section to the bill, which I would call Section Three. The severability clause would move down to Section Four. And let me try to explain what I'm doing. I have to say, I've had a number of people come and see me at my legislative office who are very upset about being victims of auto accidents by uninsured drivers of vehicles, which has caused them great financial costs as well, as well as physical pain. In most of the cases, the people that have come to talk to me about this problem, they have never been able to get reimbursed for the costs of being the victim in an accident by an uninsured driver and vehicle. And in case of physical harm to them, they've never been able to collect to be reimbursed for hospital costs or other medical costs. So I think what we need to do is to send a very strong message out to the community that we indeed are very aware of this problem and that we have an initial solution that may help. I'm going to ask, Mr. Chairman, if I have a sense from my colleagues that they're supportive of this. I know there may be a need to improve the language in our legal councils, both the minority and the majority legal council can help us, but I want to get the idea across as follows. And this is what I'm proposing. A new Section Three, which would say, failure of the owner of a motor vehicle to have and maintain current liability insurance coverage for their motor vehicle that is involved in a vehicle accident and whose response, and who is the responsible party for said accident, shall be subject to the vehicle's forfeiture and the suspension of their driver's license until full payment and restitution is made to the victims, to the victim or victims, and for the repair and or replacement of the vehicle by the uninsured owner of the responsible vehicle.
Okay.
Well, I know, I just made a couple of changes, so I need the help of our legal counsel. But what I'm saying is anyone who has a vehicle that's not insured for liability insurance, who's responsible, but, but this would require their vehicle to be, actually, the vehicle to be taken off the streets and forfeited along with their driver's license until they pay the victim for the damage to their vehicle and/or their physical harm caused by the accident.
Okay.
We need to make a strong statement, Mr. Chairman, because, Mr. Speaker, because this is going on and people are getting hurt and they have no remedy, because the individuals that cause these accidents escape and they get phony addresses and they can never be found and so forth and so on.
Okay, thank you very much. On the Guthers Amendment, Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I think what the good senator's trying to do is already covered in law. This, this, the bill we're dealing with is the fine imposed on an insurance company for failing to report that a, that a car who has had insurance with them has canceled their insurance. And, and, and what she is trying to amend and place in this section of the law, that there is already a law that says you can't drive without liability insurance. And so, and there is a law that says how you can go after the person who hits you who is not insured, but it's totally not germane to the subject matter of this bill, because this bill only redirects the fine that is imposed on the company, insurance company that sold the insurance. And when that person who bought the insurance cancels that insurance, the insurance company is obligated to report it to Rev Tax so that we can catch these guys. And, and so what this uninsured, there is sections of the law that deal with uninsured motorists, what happens to them. Ideally, the reason why we impose a $500 fine on the insurance company is this is how this system really should work, and we are trying to move towards that system. Everybody's required to buy insurance company. You cannot register your car unless you have liability insurance. So you go and you buy a car, brand new or used, you go and you buy, you register the car, Rev and Tax tells you where's your liability insurance. You have to fill out your affidavit, show a copy of your insurance policy, number and so forth, and they load it into their system. Then what happens is, if you cancel your policy, now you've got your, your legal car illegally insured, you go and you cancel your policy, the insurance company has to report that that policy's been canceled. The insurance company typically sends a hard copy saying, this insurance policy number was canceled on this date. Rev and Tax, either that or they send it by electronic. They can actually now go into the Rev and Tax system and key in the fact that this insurance policy's been canceled. It goes into the Department of Rev and Tax Motor Vehicle System, it flags it. Rev and Tax then runs a report every week. These policies were canceled, these individuals. Those policies that are canceled and the driver, the registration vehicle, the tag number, the license plate number goes into their database saying, this car's driving illegally. What, what happens next is that list of those cars that are on the road that were once legal but are now illegal because they failed to, they have failed to maintain current insurance is now up under... is now up under RevTax Motor Vehicle System. GPD, driving out there on the road, has a handheld computer who's following a car or else makes a stop on a car, keys in, the license number pops up, vehicle has no current insurance, it was canceled. There is where you catch these uninsured motor vehicles. Then the law kicks in on, you have to take that vehicle, you have to impound that vehicle, you have to take it off the road. The driver gets citation for driving without insurance. If it's habitual, he gets, maybe his license suspended, I'm not sure. But what the author is trying to do with this amendment is deal with after you catch the guy and so forth. And what we're trying to do is impose a penalty so that you don't, you can catch these guys before they get into the accidents. And so, if the insurance company doesn't report it, it gets a $500 fine. Now, if you find that the insurance company, because there's really, in the past, there was no incentive for them to report somebody who canceled. You sell a policy, you get, you say, you have to pay me half down. The guy goes, okay, you know, $100, I can afford that. So he pays half down because liability insurance is $260 for the year. So he pays $50 or he pays $100. What he does then is he cancels his policy after paying 50. And the insurance company says, well, I got 50 bucks, I don't have any liability fees in an accident. That's it. I don't even need to report it. That's why they put the fine, so that there's an incentive now for the insurance company to report it. Because what happens is then if that individual gets into an accident or is caught by a stopover by the cops and the cops flag his name and they find out that the policy's been canceled, that there's no current insurance policy, but they check RevTax and the insurance company has not told them, the insurance company has to pay for the $500 fine. So even if there's no accident and they find out that they didn't report it, the insurance company pays a $500 fine to the government. If there is an accident and you find that that individual was driving with expired insurance or non-current insurance and the company did not report it, you take that $500 fine now and give it to this individual as partial restitution for being in that accident. But all of this has nothing to do with the current redirection of this fine for this policy. And so, I understand what the author is trying to do, but I'd ask her to go and read the current uninsured motor vehicle policy and law right there and now, and she'll find out that some of these things that she wants to do is already in law. And if she wants to strengthen that, then I think she should, you know, I ask her to, and encourage her to go to that section of the law, read that, introduce a bill and amend it then, because what she's trying to do here is maybe replicate what's already in law. And I think if she wants to change it and make stiffer penalties or change that, then change it in that section of the law and not adding it to this because it really are two separate issues at this time. So while I understand what she's trying to do, I think, I think she need, encourage her to just do a little bit more research, do a little bit more work on this, and she'll find out that she doesn't do as much work as she wants to do, that she needs to do because a lot of it is already existing. And if she wants to strengthen it, make it harsher and so forth, then I think that that would be the proper time. But to do it without researching that, I think, is just not doing justice to the problem. We may have better solutions to the problem because she may, you know, you may have been involved in some instance and you saw where the law didn't apply and make the change there. But I think to do this thing here without doing the proper research, I think, is not doing justice to the problem that we all think may be existing out there. So while I support the intention, I don't support putting it in this bill for that purpose of what I've articulated.
I'm just, just wanted for clarity, is there a point of order on a germaneness or an objection to the amendment?
I really don't want to raise an order germaneness, but I do think it's not germane to the issue here because the issue here is just redirecting that fine, you know, from going to the government to going to the individual motorists in the event of a violation by the insurance company. And this deals with the two parties now. This deals with the person who caused the accident and that fact that he is uninsured. The insurance company has no, the fact that he's uninsured doesn't affect the insurance company, of course, and so forth. And so, on that, that's all I'm saying is that, you know, I'd like to beg the indulgence of the author and try to resolve that problem in that manner rather than trying to do it through this, which may be a little bit more far-reaching than what we're trying to accomplish in this bill.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. We're still on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say I'm willing to withdraw the amendment, but I just want to point out a couple of things, and I agree with my colleague here that perhaps this should be part of another bill to strengthen the laws on uninsured vehicles and drivers. But this is a real pressing issue and a lot of people are being hurt. I had the experience myself a couple of months ago. Someone caused about $5,000 damage to a vehicle who was not insured that I own, and I had no remedies. And I'm able to handle that, but there are many people who have no way of handling that and who are without transportation, they can't get to work because they don't have their car because it was an accident, not of their own making, they were hit by uninsured drivers. We need to tighten up. And one thing we need really badly is for the Guam Police Department to impound vehicles that are not insured with liability insurance. They are not doing it in a consistent manner. They're letting people go after they issue them a citation and take the car, even if they're uninsured. They need to impound those vehicles to force the issue, to protect the innocent. But I'll come back later with another bill, and I appreciate the good words of my colleague. So I withdraw the amendment.
Okay. If there's no objection to the withdrawal of the author's amendment, so ordered. We're back on the main bill, Bill 155. Okay. We've dispensed all speakers on Bill 155, so on Bill 155 EC, if there's no objection to placing into third reading, so ordered. Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 137 EC, as amended by the author, which was previously accepted by the body as part of the committee report, be placed in the third reading file.
Okay. No objections?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Just very, very quickly, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the bill deals with travel, and as you know, the abuse of travel was recently dealt with in a public auditor report in which we showed close to $1 million in unresolved travel expenditures of the government of Guam. And so, what this bill does is it tightens up the reporting requirements for travel that is funded by the government, and it extends to those, including federal funds and revenue funds generated by all governments, or applies to all departments and agencies. And any government official traveling in his official capacity is required to submit a report to the legislature prior to his leaving, five days prior to the departure, and it shall include the following information: the name of the traveling government official, the purpose of the travel, the names of individuals or organizations or officials we'll be meeting with, the names of individuals traveling with the official, the breakdown of the costs associated with government Guam-paid travel and the source of the funding, the transportation costs and the source of the funding, the departure and the return date and the number of days for authorized per deemed. Now, these are all really current requirements under the travel request form, so we're not asking for more new information and so forth. There are a couple of sections here where we've brought in that. But it's generally the information that you're required to do in order to get a TA, and you're required to submit that to the legislature, to the speaker's office, five days prior. And then, if you're traveling with anybody else and they're being funded by you, then they're subject to the same. It covers boards and agencies and directors and so forth, and board members and so forth, who are all serving on government boards and commissions. And then, of course, they file that. Then there's a penalty, Mr. Speaker, for failing, and this is, I think, where it's a little bit of a change in terms of our current requirement, that any public official who fails to submit a travel report to the legislature pursuant to this shall be penalized in the following manner. A single fine of $250 for each trip shall be assessed for the submission of travel reports after the deadline. So if you don't submit your reports five days prior to and 10 days after returning, which are pretty much the same reporting requirements now in terms of having to clear out and so forth, that there is a $250 penalty assigned and that there's a $10 penalty on a daily basis until you resolve it. And it could be just, and resolution is really just accounting for the money spent and so forth, and then, and so forth. So thereafter, then fines shall be equally shared by the approving authority and the traveler. So the person at the top and the traveler who is, and the person responsible for making sure that report is filed will be assessed the fine and they shall be shared equally. And then, noncompliance of the provisions here will subject the approving authority and the traveler an automatic deduction from his or her government paycheck until a report has been submitted pursuant to the requirement here. So you get a fine, the government gets to deduct it from you from failing to make your reports on time and so forth. And what is this is, the other and more far-reaching event is that because we now have the ability to access these travel reports and travel requests and whether or not they've been cleared or not, individuals in our community can file a complaint with the Attorney General's Office saying that, hey, this person was supposed to file his report within 10 days, it's now 25 days, it's now 45 days, and according to the information available in government records, they haven't filed. You know, there's a fine imposed on this. And so, what it does is then, the person who then files that complaint and we verify that the travel hasn't been cleared pursuant to the requirements of law, he gets one-half of the fine. So we actually, we put a bounty on individuals who don't comply with government travel law. And, you know, if we're talking about $100, $200,000, it's still significant, but we're even talking about millions of dollars of unresolved government travel claims and so forth, and we want to clear this thing out. We want to put some accountability and some teeth into the accountability that we require with our reporting requirements. And so, this would do that, and then the Attorney General of Guam will promulgate rules and regulations for filing of the complaint so that they can then trigger in the fine and paying the individual who basically files a complaint that the law hasn't been complied with, and we find that the law has indeed not been complied with, and then they get half the fine. And we get a more efficient government, we get people who are interested in our government and how we spend our dollars, and that we get people who actually help us enforce the accounting of those dollars. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I ask for my colleague's support.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. On the motion to place Bill Number 137 as amended in the third reading, Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, not only that I rise in support of this bill, but I like this bill, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this bill is very timely in light of the revelation by the public auditor of abuses. I understand that some of these government officials have left employment already, and I think the loss is suffered by the people of Guam, because the people of Guam's money that is actually not returned. Looking at the Section 2, I would assume then that the legislature, this body, would be then in a position to determine when a report is not filed on time because it's supposed to have been submitted to the legislature. Because I ask the question, how would a public citizen, for example, know when a traveler has not submitted a report on time and for how long? I would think that then the contact point for such information would have to be the legislature, which I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just saying whether this is accurate because I think that there should be a point within government to determine whether a report is late or complete or what is the problem. I like the provision that allows a private citizen to file, I guess, a complaint, but how would that person get that information? Where would he get that information? I'm just laying this out so that if we can strengthen this and make it much simpler or much easier or much, I guess, put more teeth into it, it is a good bill. That's why I raised those questions, but under Section 2, it's clear, of course, when it says here that no later than 10 days prior to departure that the report shall be submitted to the legislature in Guam, then there we would know. Another part of this is that who then would have to file, if no citizen filed and there is conclusive evidence that the traveler failed to report on time, how can that then, how can action be taken against that traveler? Would it be automatic by this legislature, by the office of the speaker to go then and file? And then, how would the fine be collected? If those questions can be answered in, this would be, I guess, a more comprehensive, a more guaranteed and a good policy. You know, the method of collection, the method of reporting, that really there need not be a citizen complaining. I think that, well, once there's a determination of noncompliance or that then they're reporting, that automatically there should be, and I like to suggest that perhaps maybe a payroll, automatic payroll deduction without authorization, that they should, we should just deduct it from the salary of the person, from the traveler. Again, you know, I hope that those features can be incorporated into this bill, but I support this bill. I'm just offering some comments and ideas as to how to strengthen it because it is a good bill. It's good for the people of Guam. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Blas, on Bill 137, EC, as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to be able to ask the author of the bill a question, and my question basically is recognizing that there already exists a policy for government travel that the travelers submit a, basically, an after-action report to include how much money's been spent, where they go, who they see, after the travel is completed. Now, this bill is proposing that they submit a report prior to the travel. Is there something that, and the question would be to the author, is there something in the report prior to the travel that is more important than the report that can be submitted after the travel?
Would the author care to yield?
I'm sorry, I...
Is there something that is, that needs to be reported prior to the travel that, for the basis of reporting this, doing, following this law, if it were to become law, knowing already that they're going to have to submit an after-action report on the travel?
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying that so that we can compare, if we never know they left, then how do we know they have to file a return? So that's why I think we have to have reporting prior to leaving because we need to know that they left and they have to, they have to file a trip report, basically, afterwards. So that's why we want them to report prior to leaving and then the after, after, the clear-out of after the travel because otherwise we don't know whether or not they left and whether or not they're required to report a travel clear-out report.
Sure. Thank you. And the reason why I ask this question, Mr. Speaker, is again, you know, I recognize and I appreciate, and I recognize that I'm all for transparency, you know, and knowing what, how each of your government dollars are spent. But along those lines, you know, a couple of things. It has been my experience working in, you know, in the administration. First off, no later than five working days, there may be times, Mr. Speaker, that I know of that I, you know, within three days or within a day of travel, I would have to leave. You know, obviously, well within or well after the five working days needed, and I'm sure that there's going to be some concessions to that too as well. But it's the rationale behind having to have to report prior to leaving, five working days prior to leaving... days prior to leaving, as opposed to recognizing already there is a requirement to submit an after-action report upon your return and then possibly putting a provision so that whatever was, and I'm sure that some of this was concerned was as a result of the report put out by the OPA and the need for continued transparency within our government, that then we put out a requirement that, you know, monthly travel, that DOA, the travel offices of the Department of Administration, or for entities that don't have to report the travel to DOA, report to this body on a monthly basis to the Speaker of travel that had been taken to include all the subsequent documents that were submitted with the after-action report. So with that, Mr. Speaker, again, I appreciate and I, you know, the need for the transparency, I appreciate the intent so that we know how our money is going to be spent before it's spent, but quite honestly, too, you know, with regards to our responsibility as the legislature and the responsibility of the executive branch, we have to, there has to be a system of trust, but then again, also recognizing that there has to be a tighter system of accountability, that I don't know whether it could be well-served, a vehicle to tighten up these accountability efforts by putting a pre-trip report as opposed to making sure that the post-trip report is done and then a reporting requirement by the, by the agency authorizing the travel or approving the travel or taking care of the travel to submit to this body a report on that travel had been taken. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Blas, on Bill Number 137, he see, as amended. Senator Ishizaki.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I commend the author for this because, you know, as we look throughout our government, you know, questions have come up, and the public auditor's report definitely highlights some of the problems in travel and reporting requirements. However, I'm not sure that we need to become the clearinghouse to verify the trip reports are done and that travel was pre-approved, and I think we already have existing requirements. And I think as this body, I think that when the audits come over, I think we should have certification, as Senator Frank Boston pointed out. I think each agency needs to certify that they've met the travel requirements, and for those agencies that did not meet them, we need to identify which travelers did not meet the requirements and have a very stringent energy that we impose on the Attorney General for appropriate prosecution, for collection or for noncompliance, or other punitive financial measures perhaps for the agency, because it is by that mechanism that we're going to impose that requirement of law, that when you travel, you need to get proper approval. When you're done, you do the trip report as required. And it is sad when that public auditor has to tell us how many officials, how many travels were not properly cleared, and it is very troubling. However, I'm not sure that, you know, and, Mr. Speaker, having watched you try to balance the budget of this branch of government, how many more bodies will we need to make sure that we compare the authorized travel with the trip reports? And I'm not sure that we need to do that. I think, Mr. Senator Ben's intentions are good, and I really support it for the intention of it, and I think every traveler needs to be accountable, and hopefully there is no travel out there that people take where they don't even show up to where they're supposed to go. And if that happens, I think those people need to be prosecuted, you know, and each agency needs to be accountable. And so the other question, Senator Ben, is like, you know, to look at this, are we going to go into an area of separation of powers by taking on certain executive branch responsibilities into this body, and do we have the resources? So I leave it to you. I love the intention, but I think we need to appropriately deal with people who don't comply. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Ishizaki. Again, on the motion to place Bill 137 as amended on the third reading, would you care to close there? Senator Pangolin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly take to heart the concern raised by my good colleagues, and it is exactly for those reasons why I'm putting this bill together and offering it. It is because we do have those, we don't have the fine, so that I'm putting in a fine for noncompliance. There is no fine at this time for noncompliance, really, and so forth. There's existing regulations and travel policies, but they're not being complied with, and when you comply with them, six months later, it's like, oh, okay. So there's no accountability for noncompliance, and so that's why here, the fine is shared between the approving authority and the traveler, so that there is accountability, so that, you know, the approving authority doesn't say, well, you know, I'll get to it. No, 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 you better get to it now, within 10 days, otherwise I'm going to have to pay a $120 fine or a $125 fine, and you're going to have to pay a $125 fine. So you better get to it now and do it. It's like the provision, Mr. Speaker, that you put in place for deducting the salary of the director. Well, the director right now is responsible for making sure they comply, and all I'm saying is that there's a policy for a balance, for a verification maybe even. And should it be the legislature? Maybe not. One thing I know is that we're not the enforcing authority in here, because it goes to the Attorney General. So the issue of separation of power, I was very cognizant about that and thought about that, so we're not enforcing it. We trigger the enforcement, maybe, by having the reports filed here and people can check here, and we can develop a way to do it. And given the suggestion of my good colleague, I'm asking for an amendment that's being drafted right now to require that, when the fact that the reports aren't filed in these days, then we just send it over to DOA or send it over to the approving authority and maybe the Attorney General, and then the fine kicks in, and there's no reward, no, if a public citizen doesn't come forward, you know, and so forth, then the fine is still imposed, but it's triggered by now the approving authority or the Attorney General's office, because we just send it to them. We just say, these reports were due, they weren't filed on time, and therefore there's a penalty assessed, and you get to do, you get to implement that penalty. So maybe, maybe a little bit intrusion on the separation of powers, but I don't think so. I think it's, I think we can debate that issue healthily, and I think that we can get away with doing it of just the notification aspect of it and so forth. So the reason why we're doing this is because the system we have, we're saying we have a system in place or let's strengthen the system in place. The system is pretty good. It's the enforcement of the system that's not optimal, and one of the reasons why is there's no incentive, no penalty and so forth, and so it's that $250 penalty here that really provides some incentive, and it's the fact that we've got other people watching, you know? It's like we don't have too many, we don't have enough police officers on the road, so we put in neighborhood watches, you know, because we don't have enough police officers. But we have enough neighbors who are concerned about their neighbors that will watch out for the other guy. Well, we don't have enough individuals at DOA or at the public auditor or the Attorney General, so we get other citizens to be able to say, hey, you know, I'm concerned about how my money's being spent. Let's look at this, and so forth, and say, oops, nobody complied here, I'm a good citizen, doesn't take much, five minutes, I'm going to submit this form, the AG verifies it, okay, it's triggered. All we probably need is four or five of these things to be actually imposed, and I tell you, compliance would dramatically increase, and I think that'll be a good thing. So I fully am cognizant of the concerns and very appreciative of those concerns, because they have actually allowed us to take a look at this in a different light and so forth. And so I just beg the indulgence of the body for maybe a minute or so while we finish up the amendment I was working on, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. We'll take a two-minute recess for an amendment. The legislature's back in order. Senator Pangolin, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, based upon some of the comment that was made by my colleagues, I wanted to add this provision in here to just enhance the enforceability of these provisions, and it would be to add at the end of the sentence in Section 2, add the following, and it's been passed out on line seven, after the word arrival, begin a new sentence that says, "Speaker of the Legislature shall provide Director of Administration, the Attorney General, and the government entity responsible for travel with a record of any violation of the reporting requirements of this section, and then the Director of Administration and the Attorney General shall be responsible for imposing the penalty set forth in this provision," so that there is greater enforcement and accountability of the enforcement.
Okay. On the Pangolin amendment, if there's no comment, no objection, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, once again, you know, just implore my colleagues to consider the accountability factor I think that is necessary to bring into our government, and, you know, it's not, we, it's not to penalize anybody, it's just to provide incentive for compliance. That's really what we want. And if the penalty provision is never implemented of this bill as we pass it, is never implemented because everybody's complying, I'd be the happiest public citizen on Guam. But if we do one or two or three because we have to, then that's what we are here for in terms of trying to provide the policy to ensure that we account for the people's dollars and that our people are involved in this whole government of ours, because it is, after all, our government and their money. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Pangolin. And again, if there's no objection to the motion to place Bill, oh my goodness, Bill 137 as amended into the...
One final amendment, Mr. Speaker, to add, Speaker Wampat and Senator Tina Munya Barnes as co-sponsors on the bill.
And if there's no objection, okay, so ordered. And if there's no objection to the placement of Bill 137 into the third reading, so ordered. Okay. Senator, oh, we have Resolution Number 95. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Oh, Senator Wampat. On Resolution Number 95, Senator Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Resolution 95 on the third reading.
And there's no objection. Senator, do you care to discuss?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Resolution Number 5, actually, was introduced by Senator Tina Munya Barnes and Senator Pangolin, and what this is basically is requesting that the Guam's delegate to Congress, Congresswoman Madeline, seek an amendment that is in the House of Representatives, Bill HR972, which is called this Civilian Agent Orange Act of 2007. And what this is actually doing is asking Congress to, is seeking rather, for Congress to provide compensation for individuals who were employees with the federal government or even a contractor for the Department of Defense, and this was during the Vietnam conflict, which is between the years of 1962 to 1975. And the reason for this is because they've actually found that there was an individual who had worked in, who was an active military personnel with the Air Force, who was at Anderson Air Force Base, who was actually handling the drums which contain Agent Orange, and these, what they were doing is loading these drums onto the planes, the B-52s, I suppose that were going to Vietnam, and the individual, in the course of his service, had found that he was afflicted with diabetes. And although Agent Orange is not something where you'd be able to test immediately, but it would actually occur on a long-term timeframe in which you would, you'll be afflicted with any one of those diseases, and this individual basically has won his case and has been then granted compensation for it. So what has happened in HR972 that it does not actually include anyone here on Guam, but primarily this individual, so we're requesting then that all those employees, whether they were actually in the military or, I mean, not just those in the military, but those who were contractors of the Defense Department and those also who were federal employees, that they too be included if they have been exposed to Agent Orange. So this, basically, Mr. Speaker, is just to request that Congress include Guam.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Wampat. Again, on the motion to place Resolution Number 95 in the third reading, on the voting file, Senator Ray Tenorio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of the resolution. There are many people in our community, one specifically I knew, I worked in the Police Department, who was affected adversely by Agent Orange for many, many years, and I just finished speaking to one of the co-sponsors with respect to the applicability of this, and I have to tell you, it's a real scourge that many of the people who have come into contact with Agent Orange have suffered for many, many years of their lives, not just in their youth when they were in Vietnam, but for years and years afterwards. This is truly something that is appropriate and we should stand behind, so I ask my colleagues to rise in support of this resolution as well, and I commend the authors. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Senator, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I also rise in full support of this resolution. Again, Guam was acquired by the United States of America, not for economic reasons, but for strategic military reasons, starting with manifest destiny in the McKinley period of 1898, and moving forward, the strategic purposes of the island of Guam has always been looked at by the United States for purely military purposes. As a matter of fact, as we're moving forward in the next 10 years, we also will be seeing major changes in growth to this economy, but also major changes to its community as a result of, again, the emphasis of Guam as a very vital and strategic military asset of the United States. The resolution that we have in front of us is, I had to speak on it, because again, I've had over a couple of days had to deal with issues in regards to some of the environmental concerns of this island. Agent Orange, again, it's something that we think about, and whether we were younger watching the television news or later on in news stories that came out, it was something that was a harm that was done to the Vietnamese people. It was used, again, Agent Orange was used as a defoliante in the Vietnam War, and of course, we know the impacts to the Vietnamese people as a result of the use of the Agent Orange. What, of course, became readily known afterwards is that Guam as being the SAC base and being the, being the, again, the strategic SAC command headquarters, or not headquarters, but SAC base here in this part of the world, and not only with bombers, but with... but SAC base here in this part of the world, and not only with bombers, but with other transport aircraft, that, of course, the airplanes that were leaving our island were not only bombing Vietnam, but were also spraying their jungles of Vietnam with Agent Orange. Of course, it became known that when those aircraft got back to Guam, whatever Agent Orange was contained within those airplanes was washed off and went straight into our Yesterday, I had an opportunity to be a part of the hearing in regards to the issues dealing with the Ordo dump. And originally, when the judge had asked me to make a statement, again, I had an idea of what I wanted to talk about, about in regards to the willingness of this legislature to work collaboratively with the administration, as well as the Environmental Protection Agency, both local and federal, to deal with the issue in the Ordo dump. It was interesting to note that as the governor was making his speech and his presentation, and the governor made mention of also the responsibilities of the federal government to the creation of the Ordo dump, there seemed to be a smirk that came out from the individual from the U.S. EPA. He seemed quite funny. I'm not too sure what was funny about it. The comment that Mr. Aurora-- Is that it, his name? --Mr. Aurora had made earlier on is that, of course, there was a need for these continued studies from weary on the Ordo dump area, as well as Alunfrit area, because, again, this was a dump that, if you measured it from the very beginning, starting in 1945, this dump was probably about anywhere from 100 to, I guess, 150 feet, the depth of the refuse that has been contained in there over these many years. And of course, he showed, Mr. Aurora was very concerned that though that area was blessed to be a natural filtration device, and there was a mitigation being done by Mother Nature to contain these contaminants and keeping their impacts to a minimum in the areas outside of the dump, he was very concerned that with all that deposit in that, within the dump, that, of course, if there was any major movement, there might be some contamination by the breaking of some vessel. We don't know what was put in there, but whether it was PCBs or fuel, or any other contaminants or toxins that were underground. And of course, he stated that, you know, this was also an issue that government of Guam had to work on, so it was important to get these studies out. The interesting thing, he said, it was important that Governor Guam was made aware of what was under there, and so he looked forward to more tests. So when government of Guam comes up with a plan for remediation, that it will know what is down there, what are the potentialities, and what needs to be done to clean it up. It's interesting how he smirked, again, when Governor Camacho made a statement, that they had contributed to it. I did, in my presentation, I decided to go along with the theme set forth by the governor. And I made a point to the judge and also to those representatives from EPA, thank goodness he wasn't smirking when I was talking, but when it comes to the Clean Water Act and environmental protection agencies, these were all creations of the early '70s. And it's interesting to note, and I made mention, that the administration of the dump, and I'm sorry if I'm veering off here, but it goes to the point of federal government responsibility. But the administration of that dump from 1945 to 1950 was from a naval governor appointed by the Secretary of Navy. And from 1950 to 1970, it was from a civilian-appointed governor, appointed by the President of the United States. And it's interesting to note that when it came to the creation of EPA, as well as the passage of laws such as the Clean Water Act, it happened after 1970. And mind you, that dump was started in 1940, right after the liberation of Guam, 1944, 1945. The war went on, and the war ended. And in that period, there was a lot of stuff that was put in there that were based on a wartime environment. After 1948, there was a reduction in the size of the military in this island, and a very big reduction. And with that, the necessity to dump the remnants of a wartime environment here in Guam. It's interesting to note that there was no EPA or Clean Water Act to protect us. And with that, I think it's important, and whether it's in issues under the Ordo dump or an issue such as this Civilian Agent Orange Act of 2007, that the federal government is made aware of its responsibilities. And again, Mr. Speaker, as we move forward in dealing with the issues of a new buildup of our military forces here in Guam, it's important that we learn from the past. And before we move to the future as well, it's important that responsibility is also put on those entities that from the past have made an impact on our environment and our people. And maybe, Mr. Speaker, with the passage of this resolution, and of course, sending it to Delegate Merdario, maybe the people of Guam can get some justice and some compensation for the acts of a federal government that seems all too willing to point fingers. And of course, I think there was a statement, what was that old saying? When you point one finger, there's usually four fingers or three fingers pointing back, unless you want to count your thumb and you can pull it backward, then there's four. But again, I also believe that in many issues that are affecting this island, and as we deal with the federal government, we must make note that the federal government has had a major impact on this island, and they have to be held accountable and responsible for it. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I rise in full and unequivocal support for this resolution. And I want to commend and thank the authors of this resolution for drafting this and for putting this together and presenting it to this body. But you know, Mr. Speaker, it continues to be, it's really sad. You know, I remember and I can recall a couple months back, when we had to deal with another resolution, a resolution, again, requesting our Congresswoman to include Guam in another It's really sad when we're forgotten. The annals of history, and if you look at the history of when Agent Orange was used, and if you look at the history of the Vietnam conflict, in almost every chapter of that conflict, you see Guam mentioned. Not only did we support that campaign, you know, in providing a military facility, so for their forward operations, did we provide them the roadways to move their munitions to and from, did we provide them the courtesy of going, moving to the side of the road so that the ambulatory buses who were bringing those soldiers who were injured, who in the conflict, could be expeditiously taken to the hospital to get care? Not only did we open our homes to those servicemen who were here for R and R, so that they can get some sense of home, and not only, if I can recall correctly too, that we had the highest mortality rate per capita than any other jurisdiction in the United States that suffered the loss of their sons and their daughters in this conflict. And we have to beg to be included? It's sad. And it continues to be sad. And you know, Mr. Speaker, I appreciate it, and I heard every word you said with regards to your testimony in support of this resolution too, on how the federal government continues to impose restrictions and not look at what our situations are. Some of these situations, again, were not by our doing. Let me go back to the Ordo dump, as you brought up. It's amazing how they want us to clean up a mess that they began. Look at their history books. They put the dump there. They started the dump there. And they're now requiring us to clean it? With regards to Agent Orange? They brought it here. They used it here. And now they want us, and in here, we have to beg to be included? I can, like I said, I have full support of this resolution. And I hope and pray that our Congresswoman, when she receives this resolution, because I have no doubt that this resolution will pass, that she hears the voices of the people through the actions of this body that says, ma'am, madam delegate, make sure that Guam is included in that act. For the number of our relatives, our friends, I'm sure all of us here can reminisce and can think, and we know of an individual, of somebody who was affected by Agent Orange. That's the sad thing about it, too. I don't think there's any other jurisdiction in the nation that can ask its people, if they know of individuals who may be affected by this, that the whole population can say, yes, I do. And we have to beg to be included. I just hope that our Congresswoman takes this resolution, and with as much fever, with as much passion, with as much commitment as this body will have in passing this resolution, bring that to her esteemed body and say Guam expects nothing less than to be included in that. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Blas on Resolution Number 95. Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I just want to rise in support of the resolution, of course. It is a request, you know, the federal government has been looking to account for itself also to those that have been injured by policies that the government has imposed during times of war or in the course of carrying out required duties. And the Agent Orange issue was, of course, a problem that was inflicted upon soldiers in Vietnam who were exposed to it when they were spraying the Agent Orange in the jungle. And the problem is that Agent Orange didn't get to Vietnam all by itself. Somebody had to load the planes, somebody had to unload the planes, and not all of this was done in Vietnam. And the current policy, of course, for finding remedial compensation for these soldiers who were exposed to Agent Orange and have suffered from it, has been restricted to those that are in Vietnam, plus a few other places in which the federal government has come forth and said Agent Orange was used or tested. It's interesting that the federal government does not list Guam as one place in which Agent Orange was used, stored, or tested. Yet we have individuals who testify that they were at Anderson Air Force Base, who loaded the planes for some of this Agent Orange to be taken to Vietnam. We have the Veterans Administration who awarded benefits to veterans who were stationed at Anderson, who developed presumptive diseases from exposure to herbicides, Agent Orange in this case, and were awarded benefits because of exposure. And yet, one arm of the federal government says, Guam, it's not a problem. We have another, and this had to be done through an appeal process through the administrative judge of the Veterans Administration, to finally get this individual qualified for that. Just this year in March, we had a gentleman who didn't have to appeal his case, but certainly they had to fight his case, that he, again, was awarded full disability benefits due to the effects of Agent Orange that he handled while at Anderson. It really is baffling to me how one arm of the federal government can say there was never any Agent Orange on Guam, and the other arm can say, you were sick because you were exposed to Agent Orange on Guam, and we're going to give you compensation for it. That is really the crux of our relationship with the federal government, Mr. Speaker. And sometimes it's not confined to us, but we certainly seem to suffer the effects of it the most. You know, it's not unknown for the federal government to inflict this same kind of denial to other American citizens. You know, the radiation exposure that Guam has and our fight to get compensation or included in the Downwinders program. The federal government's position was deny, 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 and when you get caught, deny some more. They denied that we were exposed to radiation. They denied that there was any, Guam was exposed to any kind of radiation during the atomic testing. Yet we were able to find in their own documents that have been unclassified, saying that there were measurements taken on Guam that showed radioactive isotopes, exposure to the people of Guam during the testing period. We found records in their own unclassified documents that says that the ships that were in the Marshall Islands were fallout rained upon them because we wanted to know what the effects were going to be, so we put a ship out there with some people in there and said, you go out there and as the bombs fall and the effects fall, then we'll test you later on and find out what happened to you. And you know what they did? They took those ships to Guam and they washed them down at Cocos Island and they washed them at Upper Harbor. Up until the time we found those documents, it was denied. Never. The people of Guam, you must be crazy. What are you talking about? And it's the same thing-- And it's the same thing with Agent Orange. In a 2003 report by the Assistant Secretary for Defense for Logistics and Installations, where he gave Congress the list of US sites where Agent Orange was stored, tested, or handled. Guam's not in the list, yet we have one agency that says veteran serving at Anderson Air Force Base, this one individual had developed a disease due to exposure consistent with Agent Orange, and he was exposed at Anderson. They just continue to deny, you know? And that's what we really are pleading and saying. They have recognized the effect of Agent Orange when you're exposed to it for soldiers. And what we want to do is include those individuals, and this is a congressional resolution right now that would expand the program to federal contract employees and federal employees. And now we want to say, because you have had individuals that were stationed on Guam, given disability benefits because of exposure to Agent Orange on Guam, you should extend the coverage of this amendment that you're proposing to those federal contract workers and federal workers that were on Guam during the period covered by the proposed legislation.
............
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes?
Sidhuz Maasi, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to close on this Resolution 95, and I'd like to extend my undankaluna sidhuz maasi and my appreciation to my colleagues who support this resolution, and, Mr. Speaker, I have a couple of amendments, and what I'd like to do first is go ahead and request, if I can do the first amendment and then speak on the bill, then do my second amendment, is my first amendment is a couple of my colleagues has asked that they be placed on to the resolution, and that was Senator Frank Blas and Senators Ray Tenoros. I also would like for them to be included into this resolution.
Okay, again, there has been an amendment to place the names of, I'm sorry, Senator?
Senator Frank Blas Jr. and Senator Ray Tenoros.
Okay, and if there's no objection, so ordered.
Mr. Speaker, I'm sorry, I don't mind. I would like to yield to one of my, notwithstanding any House rules, Senator Luhon would like to speak.
It was understood that you would be the final speaker, but would you care to yield to?
I would yield, Mr. Speaker, to...
If there's no objection for the body?
No objection.
You will not lose your turn. You'll be the final speaker. Thank you very much for your gracious, Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes. Senator?
We'll work the amendment right now or wait?
Actually, the amendment, there's already been no objection to the amendment. It's carried. Senator Luhon?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that Senator Barnes was going to close. And so I was trying to yield to the lady from Mingila in regards to that, and I'm sorry, the mistake is just as well mine. You know, Mr. Speaker, when we read House Resolution 972, Civilian Agent Orange Act of 2007, you know, I read it with mixed feelings because as I've always said and stood up and spoke about us being us meeting the people of Guam being Americans and proud Americans of that. And for the mere fact that this act excludes Americans from Guam is really insulting, Mr. Speaker. It's really insulting to its highest degree. You know, as we sit here and as we continuously are actually are spoken to or, I guess, presented to about the military buildup. And it should be the other way around. In other municipalities, when you have a military buildup, the lawmakers of that municipality will be upfront. And people building in your community will be listening. Except as Americans here in Guam, it's the opposite. You listen to what they have to say. And to date, Mr. Speaker, you know, since the inception of the military buildup, it's been the same. We've been in the receiving end of the of what's going to be done as opposed to be as opposed to ones who will be presenting what needs to be done. Again, the Civilian Agent Orange Act of 2007, Mr. Speaker, I mean, if we were treated as equal Americans as opposed to the bastard child, we wouldn't have to be debating this issue. It would be a done deal. And as I continue to say, we must stop the practice of bringing Washington's agenda to Guam. We must start bringing Guam's agenda to Washington. When we read here even to who these resolutions are going to go to, to Congressman John Conyers of Michigan, Lamar Smith of Texas Congressman, Congressman Robert Wexler of Florida. I don't think anyone in Guam voted for these congressmen. And yet, they're deciding. And I'm sure that if you even ask these congressmen, what is the popular saying in Guam, they wouldn't know. They probably wouldn't know. Yet ask the, a former speaker, Senator Blas, that said, we have to beg. We're begging as Americans. Begging as Americans to come to this American table instead of being the bastard hated child of this American family. And I wish that once and for all, that Guam's agenda would be highlighted in Washington when it comes to military and military activities in Guam. We're not asking for anything special more than anything else. We're wanting that anything that applies to any military buildup, any military burdens upon a community, that Americans here in Guam are in the list of priorities as well alongside its other American family. You know, when we look at the devastation of Agent Orange, I've got a good friend, Jess Sablon from Chalampago. Although his illness not necessarily incurred here in Guam, but as a Marine in Vietnam, I just ran into him on Sunday. He just recently had surgery in his carotid artery because of the effects. He's telling me, he says, say Jess, both arms, I have no feelings anymore in my arms, or in my hands, in my arms. I have no feelings. He says, you know, you can perform surgery in my hand right now, and I wouldn't feel it. His hands and fingers already. It's my childhood friend. These are things, again, that, again, the effects of Agent Orange, wherever they may be, in Vietnam, in Guam. The former Speaker Ben Pangolinan said, it didn't get to Vietnam by itself. It had to be transported from somewhere. And we already know that a great portion of that was transported from here. A lot of them were housed here. So, Mr. Speaker, you know, I want to commend again the authors of this resolution. But again, it's a sad day again as part of an American family that we've been excluded. Once again, we've been excluded. And you know what? We might still be excluded regardless of this resolution. You know, these congressmen don't have constituencies here in Guam. They don't represent us. They represent the constituents in Michigan, Texas, and Florida. And yeah, we have to beg. As an American, in an American home, we have to beg to be treated like an American, an equal American. And that's wrong, Mr. Speaker. Outright wrong. I hope that this new year will change the minds of people in Washington. And that in this new year coming, that Guam will be a part of your American family, not the hated bastard child that you treat us. We shouldn't have to beg. Again, when you call upon loyal Americans to fight for your country, they don't have to come out here and beg to our men and women to risk their lives, put themselves in harm's way. They don't have to beg. They volunteer. They volunteer to go. Again, as an American, we shouldn't have to beg. It's a crying shame that we have to beg. I hope this resolution does it. I hope this resolution ends all resolutions in regards to being treated as an equal American. We're not asking for any more. We definitely do not deserve any less. With that, Mr. Speaker, and I want to thank the Senator Barnes for yielding her time. Again, my apologies for that, but again, I arise in full support, and I hope all the colleagues, I'm sure, will be in support of Resolution 95. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Luhon. Again, to close on the resolution, Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes?
Sidhuz Maasi, talu, Mr. Speaker, for yielding that time to my good Senator from Tamooning. Sidozmasi talu, Mr. Speaker, for yielding that time to my good Senator Tamooning. But also, Mr. Speaker, with great appreciation as we continue to hear the support for this resolution, you know, Mr. Speaker, when it was brought to my attention for the request that we seek our delegate to Congress, the Honorable Madeline Berdallou, to amend, to do an amendment to include our island of Guam in this H.R. Resolution 972, which is the Civilian Agent Orange Act of 2007, it was brought to my attention that Guam wasn't included. And you know, it was with a heavy heart that I said, "What? Guam was not included again?" Yes, we continue to be second-class citizens. I said, "The only way that we can continue to show Uncle Sam that we should not be second-class citizens, we should be treated the same way that everybody else in the nation is treated." I said, "Got to bring the awareness out again. Got to bring our community." What was sad, Mr. Speaker, was at the public hearing, they were testimonies given by gentlemen on our community who devoted not just 10 and 20 years to the federal government, to Uncle Sam. If you looked and you heard, I mean, if you saw and you heard the testimonies that were given, all of them had 25, 35, 29, 35, 30, 35, even 39 years. Names like Mr. Mendola, Mr. Perez, Mr. Cruz, Mr. Canata, Mr. Ariola, Mr. Garrido, all those fine, Mr. Dogado, all those men who continue to serve and assist to help our military armed forces who were protecting our community from harm's way. They were all archimoral people, local community. And yet, in their testimony, they said, "You know, when we saw this article in the paper and was asked to come to the public hearing, we weren't really sure if we were a part or if we could even be a part, but they said that if they didn't at least try to ask and to see if they might be included," he said, "Because you know what? When we were working for the federal government or the contractor to the federal government, they were never told what was being pushed. A lot of them were held to how they would say secrecy. You know, you can't say, you can't speak, you can't tell your family what you're doing." One gentleman said, "You know, he knew. He sprayed the planes. He knew that the equipment and the bombs and everything that was being transported in, they knew because they heard others." You know, Guam is very small. Everybody in Guam is almost related to one another. But they continued to want to do what was best for their people. And at the same token, today, for those who are alive, said, "If there is a possibility because they served all these many years, three to four decades, that let me tell my story, because you know what? It really shouldn't just be us to be included because we worked for the federal government. It should be the whole island of Guam, the whole civilian population. Because you know what? For such a small island, who gave Uncle Sam everything, who invited Uncle Sam into their house, who did everything, they weren't even given that courtesy. But yet, with humble respect for those who continue to be alive today, those experiencing complications, those whose children, a couple of them had passed on because of the possible contaminants, they just said, "It would almost be a miracle if they would be included in this." Mr. Speaker, we're not. The people of Guam are not asking for much. When Uncle Sam said, "We need help," our island of Guam represented our nation with the highest percent per capita to enlist voluntarily. And today, Mr. Speaker, today as we speak, Guam continues to be the number-one patriotic, not just island but country among the whole United States and its territories to want to continue to help, serve, and protect the United States. And what does Uncle Sam do to us? Continues to forget. Maybe they say they didn't forget. Maybe they just said, "Nah." I think a president one time said, "Oh, they're just a number." There are not, at that time, not even 40,000. The people of Guam is just a number. When we look to our neighboring countries who just finally received information regarding the NTP, which is the nuclear testing program, and trying to negotiate with Uncle Sam because of the damaging effects that happened to their people, and sharing some of the similar stories that our people of Guam are experiencing because of the possible contaminants or the confirmed contaminants, as justified by Uncle Sam, on the other hand, it's a shame that we continue to have to request, inquire, and maybe even beg, and we shouldn't have to. We have given our hearts, we have given our homes, we have given our lives to Uncle Sam. And the only thing we ask is that fair compensation be given back to our community as a whole. So, Mr. Speaker, I stand before you today in representation of the whole island of Guam to seek Congress's support, to ask again to be included and not be forgotten, so that our people of Guam can feel at heart that the representation that they have provided for the freedom that we live today is given with the knowledge that they know that we have given from the heart. It is only fair that we take this step to ask Congress again and not have to beg, but to ask that we be included. Mr. Speaker, I have an amendment that I'd like to include, and it proposes to bring the awareness out of this Civilian Agent Orange Act of 2007, which is in Congress right now. But to bring the awareness out to other representatives around the world to know that there is an island who just wants to have the same benefit that those in America get granted. With that, I'd like to amend the final resolve on line seven, if I'm not mistaken, page four, after U.S. House of Representatives, comma, the Secretary General of the United States Nation, the President of the United States Nations General Assembly, the United Nations Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights, and then it goes on to say, "The Honorable Felix P. Camacho in Magalan, Guam." Again, Mr. Speaker, making sure that this resolution just doesn't reach Congress, but it also reaches the United Nations so that they know and that the voices of the people of Guam want to be heard.
On the Munya Barnes Wampat Amendment, no objections. Amendment passes. Senator Barnes?
And again, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to just take the time to extend again my undanklun and sidozmasi for all those who spoke in support of this resolution. And I ask that the rest of my colleagues support the same and know that we get this resolution to Congress, to our delegate, Madeline Berdallou, Honorable Madeline Berdallou, immediately. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and God bless our people of Guam.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. Do you want to motion to place it in third reading?
No objection.
No objections?
No.
Okay. Resolution number 96 EC. Again, authors, T.R. Barnes. Senator Barnes, you're recognized.
Sidozmasi talu, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move that Resolution 96 EC as introduced by myself, Senator Julie Wampat, and Senator E.B. Palacios, E.B. Calvo, and J.S. Bodanbi moved to the third reading for purposes of discussion, and I'd like to speak briefly on the resolution.
On the motion, no objections. Senator Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Resolution 96 EC is relative to requesting the Guam Preservation Trust to restore, renovate, and rehabilitate the Guam Congress Building, commonly known as the Guam Legislature Building, and it's here in the village of Agonya. Just to give a little history on the Congress Building, the construction of the Guam Congress Building began, its inception began on September 1947, where the building was completed, it started on September 1947, the building was completed on July 8th of 1948, and then it was dedicated to the highest ideals of democracy and justice on July 21st, 1948, when it was presented to the Guamanian people by the naval governor at that time, which was Charles Parnell. Mr. Speaker, before 1951, the Guam Congress at that time consisted of two houses. It was then called the House of the Assembly and the House of Counsel. The first election of the legislators under the new unicameral Guam Legislature is mandated by the Organic Act at that time took place in November of 1950. And when it was convened in January of 1951, it was officially changed to the Guam, the first Guam Legislature, which ended the 11th and the last Guam Congress. And to add on to this history, Mr. Speaker, in March of 1990, the 12th Guam Legislature to the recommendation of, by its engineering consultant, because there was problems in that building, the Guam Congress Building had to be vacated for safety reasons. And since that time, the Guam Legislature has since been housed in this current legislation, which is here at Hessler Street in Agonya. And in an effort to restore the Congress Building, there was a committee that was formed, and of course, dialogue was worked on, there was a committee resolution, but I guess it didn't come to full fruition. And in an effort to go back to where our legislative history started, it was only fitting that this policymaking body meet with the Guam Preservation Trust and work on a collaboration to see what kind of funding we could to restore, rehabilitate, and refurbish this building because it had so much history, and it was the place where we began. But I also knew that it was important that we got the community's support on this, and that's how this resolution came to play. And, Mr. Speaker, I asked that my colleagues support this resolution. I'd like to quote a comment that one of our former Guam Assemblymen, Carlos P. Titan, who continues to live today, he made a comment that I believe in my heart is of great significance, and it said, he said, "The Guam Legislature Building is of historical, political, and cultural importance because it was the House of the Assembly of the Guam Congress where tremorials staged the first revolt against colonial administration on March of 1949. And since the Spanish-American Wars in the late 1600s, the last Guam Congress met in this building, and the first Guam Legislature also met in that same building." And I believe in my heart that this building deserves to be preserved, to be rehabilitated so that we, as a policymaking body, can go back home to where we began. I thank you, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this resolution, and I humbly ask that my colleagues support wholeheartedly this Resolution 96. Sidozmasi and again talu sidoz on Benadice, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Munya Barnes. Acting Speaker Calvo, you're recognized on Resolution number 96 EC.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in full support of Resolution number 96. I will note that there is already forward movement that is occurring, and I want to thank the good senator for the introduction of this resolution that would complement in our efforts to move forward on the receipt of a grant through, again, the historic Guam Preservation Trust. It started out about a month ago, and as I was reviewing with the central office and the management and the folks that were in charge of maintenance, as well as some of the individuals that were tasked with hearing complaints from the public, it turned out we had an issue in regards to the health and safety of residents of Guam as well as the tourists that were visiting the plaza. And I'm sure everyone is cognizant of the fact that that area, as well as the surrounding DOA building, is under the auspices... is under the auspices and responsibility of the Guam Legislature. And with that issue in regards to potential facilities that were, may be endangerment to the public, again, there was the issue on the Azotea, the Chocolate House, and the Old Guam Museum that were brought forward by complainances from the public, as well as from members of the legislature, staff that were in charge of, were involved in maintenance, that these areas were concerned. So we, again, there was a correspondence and communications with Department of Public Works and Parks and Rec. And with that, a request made by myself and the legislature for the DPW to do an evaluation of the area, and that's where it came back. And the Department of Public Works sent us a notice of the, again, the unsafe conditions of these facilities. And with that, there was a movement forward and recommendation from staff within the legislature to move towards the application of a grant to deal with the renovation and repairs and renovation of these areas, as well as the old Guam Legislative Building. So an application was submitted and was revealed by the board during its November meeting, which was then referred to the Architectural Committee. The next board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January ninth, two thousand and eight. The Architecture Committee was to submit recommendations for action in that grant request. After approval, there will be three phases which will occur that again will require the approval of the board. Phase one, which would be a submission of an Historic Structures and Assessments Report within ninety days. Phase two, submission of a construction drawing within ninety days. And phase three, an actual rehabilitation recommendation within a six-to-eight-month timeframe. And between each phase, there will be an RFP issued by the trust. Again, I want to thank the good senator. I will move forward also in my capacity as acting speaker to designate the individuals from the legislature as required by this resolution to move forward in not only the acquiring and receipt and the awarding of a grant, but to also to keep up with the progress in not only the restoration, renovation of the areas I mentioned earlier, the Chocolate House, Azotea, and the Old Guam Museum, but as well as the main Legislative Session Hall, which is located directly across the road from the Cathedral Basilica. So again, I rise in full support of this measure, and I look forward to further collaboration with my colleagues in this endeavor to put the Guam Legislature back into a condition that we all could be proud of. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Acting Speaker. Any other speakers on Resolution number ninety-six? Senator Barnes? There are no other speakers, would you motion to place it? Do you want to close on your resolution?
I thank you again, Mr. Speaker. I'd just like to take the time again to thank my colleagues who spoke on the bill and ask that we move Resolution ninety-six to the voting file. Nobody else?
Oh, I'm sorry, if there's no objection to the movement of Resolution ninety-six into the voting file? No objection, so ordered. I'm going to take, I'm going to take a two-minute recess. The legislature's back in order. Senator Luhon?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, motion to recess until ten o'clock tomorrow morning.
And if there's no objection, so ordered. Recess until ten o'clock tomorrow morning.